This is the Camden Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, March 29, 2023. Tonight we'll be considering a subdivision of land application. Before we get started, I would just like to check and see if there's any public comment on non-agenda items. Okay, I don't see any. Anyone on the board have anything? Okay, I'll cross that one off quick. Meetings and hearings continued from March 15, 2023. Is that where we are, Jeremy?
Yep.
So, right now, we're doing a continued hearing and meeting regarding the application for the subdivision of land. The applicant is Nord Haven Camden LLC, represented by Gartley-Endorsky, who I see is here. The property address is 440 Belfast Road, MAP 134 Lot 1 in the Coastal Residential District. I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Jeremy real quick to do a... Do you want to do your summary now, or should we wait until after the waiver?
No, I think we should go ahead.
We are going to have... I've been... It's been sort of gently explained to me that we should have had a public hearing on the waiver request at the last meeting. We didn't do that, so we're going to handle that first, and then we're going to go into the rest of the process. There were several requests for a waiver from the applicant. I'll just go ahead and read from the thing here. "The waiver request language was originally submitted by the applicant in their pre-application packet and included again with their preliminary plan application. Process for hearing and waivers is included in Chapter 235, Article 11." So, we're going to go ahead and do the waiver hearing first. So, as far as the public hearing process, we'll give the applicant an opportunity, I think, to speak, and then the public will have an opportunity to comment. Then we'll go back to the board and the applicant. Any questions of the applicant? And then the public will have a second opportunity to comment with new information or new comments, and then, once that period is closed, there will be no further comments on the waiver requests from the public, and then the board will deliberate on the waiver itself. So, at this point, we're going to look at the... There's a couple of waiver requests. I think we're only doing one actual...
Only one actual.
One actual request. Yeah, okay. The process for the waiver... The waiver design guidelines. "The board may waive design guidelines of this chapter when it finds that the need for a waiver is due to unique circumstances of the property and that the circumstances are beyond the control of the developer, provided that (a) any request for waivers shall be provided in writing prior to final approval; (b) the developer has submitted clear and convincing documentation that the waiver requested is necessary and appropriate for the proposed subdivision; (c) written statements from the appropriate town departments address the possible effects of the requested waiver on the public health, safety, and welfare." We have the only department head is Chief Farley from the Fire Department is the only town department head who was asked to comment and provide information on that, and we have a letter from him. "D, the board provides... notifies the Butters and holds a public hearing on the requested waivers," which is where we are right now. "And the copies of the public hearing notice were sent to the tenant Butters by first-class mail, and the hearing has been advertised twice." We have five members of the board present. Looks like we have four.
We have four if with John voting.
Four with John voting. Do we have to have five present in order to do the waiver? We don't have Pat, and we don't know about Mark.
You can just table this until we find out if Mark is coming or not.
Yeah.
But this is...
This is from the statute. Yeah. Unanticipated hiccup there, guys. Sorry. Yeah, so I'm going to table this waiver request. Hopefully, Mark will show up. If not, we will have to hold a separate public hearing on the waiver itself.
Because I don't think Pat comes in yet.
Yeah, she was not.
She's not able. Okay.
So, therefore, we're going to table to...
Just later.
Later in this meeting?
Hopefully, later in the meeting, and if not, then...
We just need to remember to revisit.
Yeah, Jeremy's trying to get ahold of somebody. Yeah. All right. Sorry about that. That's a quick review of the waiver procedure that we will not be going over right now.
So, that would call it a time of how to talk to the area.
For the waiver request itself, the public comment will be tabled. Right.
Can you just hold on one second? We're trying to get to YouTube operational. There's an issue.
It's not working?
No.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Sorry about this, everybody. We have a challenging audio/video system.
We do.
We do.
Yeah. And we have all those fans out there who...
Well, it was being... It is being recorded. It was being recorded so we can put that back up onto YouTube, but it was not live.
And there's no...
Yeah, no one's...
You could just do it straight from the wall, or you could do it straight from your computer to YouTube.
I'm not sure how to do that, Allison. I know Shenley's trying to work on it right now.
We're here now?
Yeah.
Just moving on to the other plan review.
Plan review.
And all of that.
And review of submission. Finds plan is sufficiently complete, and then we can hold the public hearing?
For the rest of it.
Submission.
Was something on the firewall?
That... And we're not approving the... We're not approving the package tonight, anyway, so the waiver is like... They're coming back to us, anyway.
Okay, so we're just doing preliminary plan and find if complete?
The firewall wouldn't get issued.
This is preliminary plan review.
Right now, it's working. It's working. It's all... Do you hear this one?
Yeah. Because these are the next one. Because then we have to go through... Because then we have to go through all the standards.
In the preliminary?
That's what I'm not... What I can't figure out.
To make... Just to find it complete.
Complete. That's... I think so, too, because Jeannie would have put more in here. Because then we have to go through... Because then we have to go through all the standards.
In the preliminary?
That's what I'm not... That's what I can't figure out.
To make... Just to find it complete.
Complete. That's... I think so, too, because Jeannie would have put more in here.
So, there wasn't much potential problems here. There's only one thing. The three... What is the... Before they have a point, that was really serious. That means the house is open to the... To the microphone. It's just... Go down. That means the house is open to the... To the microphone. To the microphone. You just can't... I think the very first one. That's the microphone. Show me there's something in the plan. We have a sound check on that. So, we're being... This is the first section of the non-agenda.
That's correct. That's not before us at all.
All right, we're just going to go. Shenley, I think we're good there. This will just... All right, so this is going... What will be recorded and posted tomorrow will likely be what's being recorded down below on the system, not what's here, but I will see.
Is there some Mark?
I have not, Jeannie.
All right, so this is going...
All right. Go ahead. Sorry.
No, it's fine. Thanks for the word from that. So, as indicated, we're going to table the waiver discussion and move right on to the preliminary plan review. And so, this opportunity... This is the opportunity, I think, Jeremy, if you have a quick introduction of the project?
I could do a very quick one.
Yeah, let the applicant go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's probably more appropriate that they do it, but yeah, so this is a proposal by Nord Haven. They're proposing a 10-unit subdivision that includes the existing residential unit on the property, so nine new buildings at... On Belfast Road. Gartley-Endorsky is the applicant. This is an open-space subdivision in our coastal residential zone. I think I'll leave it at that. This is, again, the preliminary meeting. We had a pre-application meeting, I don't know, like two months ago now?
Yeah.
And then we did a site walk. I think all the board members were there at that site walk. Maybe Mark Murray wasn't. I don't remember now. And we had a couple people from the public there. And then we, again, like you said earlier, we had to table this to continue it to today. And that's what we had before. So, again, it's the preliminary approval meeting, and we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Yep. So, now is the opportunity for the applicant to introduce their plan, and we'll move from there.
All right, thank you, Ethan. I'm Will Gartley with Gartley-Endorsky Engineering and Surveying, and Andrew Hedrick is with me tonight, and we're here representing Rob Brown and Ed Hanson of Nord Haven Camden LLC for a 10-dwelling unit subdivision on a 43.33-acre parcel on Springbrook Hill in Camden. The project includes onsite septic, onsite well, underground power from Route 1. We're in open-space zoning, so we've provided 33% of the total parcel acreage as open space, and we've coordinated that with IF&amp;W to provide the area that they thought was most adequate to continue to provide deer wintering on the parcel. Most of that's to the west of Springbrook, and then there's a piece that heads north up along the State Park boundary. Included in the open-space zoning is a section that talks about that if it's dwelling units, that the development or it says the dwelling units can't occupy or encompass more than an acre and a half of land per unit. It's not 100% clear to me what that means by encompass or occupy, but we provided a sketch that we labeled SKE 2 that shows basically the entire area that this... These 10 units are using for road, septic, stormwater management, wells, the buildings themselves, parking. I think we were pretty conservative in encompassing everything that could be considered part of this development. And that total acreage is 10 acres. What the ordinance says is that we can't occupy more than 1 and 1/2 per unit, which would be 15 acres. So, we're well under that section as we've interpreted it. We did sit down with Jeremy and Shenley and discuss what that meant and tried to come to a common sense agreement on what we should show. Some of the changes from the pre-app are that Unit D2 was moved from the road section that we actually are requesting a waiver from. That's about a 350-foot section of road that's named Fost... Is it Fossil?
Fost.
Fostale. Fostale, sorry. And that section had three units on it previously, and now it only has two, so that road that we're requesting be allowed to be 12 feet with two-foot shoulders, opposed to 18, now is really just a drive for two units. Then... What's that?
Get right there, Jeremy. Why don't you do it? Next one.
Next one.
Yep. Right there. 94.
Ah, perfect. I've got a little... So, right here, there were three units here, and whoops.
Did I... Did I mess up, Will?
I think you just zoomed down the sheet when you...
Okay, there we go. And so, that other unit was just moved over to this side. And then, we also added a landscape buffer along the Travis boundary line, right here, where the septic system is, and there's a tennis court on that property right here. So, this will provide a good buffer for both sides. We also added a carport for Units D1 and D2 that, right here, was on this side of the road and closer to that corner, so we flipped it to this side. We added the topo that was requested on the western side of Springbrook to give the planning board an idea of what was happening over there with regards to topography. And then, obviously, we've added more detail on the open space and provided the exact acreage. We've got... We're required to have 14.29 acres, which is 33% of the 43.33, and what we're showing on the plan, it's labeled as open space. It's also going to be, and it is included in the condo docs, and will be recorded on the subdivision plan, of 14.4 acres. We've applied for and received entrance permit from Maine DOT and a stormwater permit by rule from Maine DEP. We've been coordinating with Chris Baldwin, PE from Cumberland County Soil Conservation District. He's been reviewing all the stormwater measures. We've had a good back-and-forth with him. A lot of what he's asked for was just some additional calculations that we had done but hadn't provided, and some more construction detail on a lot of the stormwater measures. So, we've been sending him stuff. Our last email today was just a couple more small items that we've agreed to give him, and then he said he'd be sending a letter of... Basically, that he's found it adequate and complete and in compliance with the town's ordinances.
Okay.
So, we should have that very shortly. And then, as you mentioned before, Ethan, you've got the sign-off from Chief Farley. I sat down with him and went through our fire storage, water supplies. We're providing a 14,000-gallon underground concrete tank system, Cistern, that has a dry hydrant that comes up out of it, and it's adjacent to the turnout that we provided so that they have access to water. We went over the turnaround locations and the size and dimensions of those, and also the road waiver that we requested. I wanted... In fact, I sent him some more detail today just to make sure he was completely understanding of the width of the road, the length of the turnarounds in the driveway, and the number of units that were on that section of road. So, that's kind of a brief...
Yep.
...overview, and we're certainly here and ready to answer questions as you go through the requirements.
Yep. Anybody have any initial questions of the applicant?
Yeah, Ed and Rob would like one to just quickly show what the aesthetic of these buildings are going to look like.
Sure.
Oh, it's awkward to have to turn around, though. Put it on that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We can advance that, Jeremy. So, hi, it's Robert Brown with Nord Haven Camden. Ed and I will probably tag-team the presentation, but we wanted to show you a couple of slides to bring the project to life a little bit more than the schematics on a site plan, which often, I'm sure, in these situations, it can get lost in the engineering detail.
Yep.
So, we're going to talk a little bit about the lifestyle approach for the project, the design concepts, landscaping amenities, our approach to environmental and sustainability issues, and then our approach to incorporating the community that we hope to build there, how we hope to build it, and how it integrates, I think, nicely with the broader Camden community. So, if you advance along. So, the approach to this project is really an inspiration of the natural setting that it's located in and a real passion for design. So, what we're building, we think, is a unique way for homeowners to experience the wild of the Maine coast and still benefit from its nearby location to what most people describe as one of Maine's most scenic seaside villages. And it's really a modern interpretation of Maine's camp culture, but with a Scandinavian spin. So, we think it will appeal to an upscale vacation homeowner who is really interested in the remote getaway in the woods idea of a Maine-style camp, but really values the comforts, luxury, and design of more of an upscale setting. And so, that's the mix that we're trying to pull together, blend together in this project. So, Jeremy, if you just flip... So, the images on this page are representative of the cabin designs that we hope to build at 440 Belfast. They are designs that were developed by a company located in Helsinki, Finland, who we have sponsored... Partnered with in the design of our interpretation of their authentic Scandinavian cabin. And I say "our interpretation," it's... We've modified their original designs a little bit to appeal to a more American aesthetic, so bigger bathrooms, slightly bigger open spaces than what they may have designed originally for these cabins. But they are made from sustainably harvested Nordic spruce, and they are prefabricated in Finland and shipped to the United States here, where we'll bring them to site and assemble them, and then build the interiors in a more of a stick-built, traditional stick-built kind of format. So, we're showing three different styles here. Ultimately, we're focused on the two on the left side. The one in the top left is a two-bedroom, two-level, with the second level being a lofted floor with big open space behind that wall window. And then, the one in the bottom left is more mono-pitched roof, again, featuring a big glazed window, and obviously, these can focus nicely on sightlines and the views that are afforded at the property. So, Jeremy, if you flip forward. The design philosophy is to try to bring the outside in to these cabins, so you can imagine with these giant walls of windows, you really have the opportunity for the natural setting to be part of the interior living space, and that's what we're trying to go for in these. The interior designs are intentionally Scandinavian-inspired, so very simple, not a lot of detail. Modern curated furniture packages will be offered to homeowners as part of the approach to the project. The use of materials and selection of materials are intended to create warmth on the inside. You'll notice the darker wood-lined panel... Wide plank floors and a nice modern fireplace in the corner, so a classic look for what we're going for. So, Jeremy, if you advance. The next slide is just to give you another set of visuals of the types of interior finishes that we're looking to achieve.
Yeah, and we're mostly concerned with just the exterior and then, you know, the location and the landscape, so yeah.
So, flip forward. So, Lance could segue to landscapes. So, this is an example of the mono-pitch roof style home that we expect to locate at the top of the meadow that faces the Penobscot Bay and the islands, and our focus on naturalized landscapes. So, this gives you a sense for the rewilding of the meadow with wildflowers that'll be crossed by pathways that take residents to a gathering space in the lower meadow and into the open space in the woods. So, if you flip forward. And in the forested part of the property, this is the type of setting that we're looking for for the cabins. So, landscaping, again, will be focused on restoration of the forest floor that gets disturbed in the construction process to recreate the pine needles, the moss, the ferns all around the home. So, it's a landscaping approach that only uses native species for any planting that we do. We've engaged Songscape Gardens out of Bar Harbor to advise us and do the design work for this, but it gives you a feel for the natural look that we're going for.
So, no lawns, no foundation shrubs.
Mm-hmm.
No picket fences, that kind of thing. It's cabins in the woods.
Yep.
Amenities are focused on gathering spaces for residents, so this is a concept drawing of an amenity that would be in the field in the front part of the property. So, the home that we were looking at just a minute ago would be at the top of the meadow. This would be further down the meadow, and...
Is that B1?
B1 is the home, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
B1.
Yep.
And so, the idea here is, again, rewild wildflowers in the meadow, paths cut through to the gathering space. This one happens to be oriented around a fire pit, but with seating, with retaining walls and other wall-type structures that can take advantage of the views of the bay and the islands. If you flip forward. Another key amenity for the property is what we call adventure spas. So, these are outdoor spas located... Well, an outdoor spa located in a remote section of the property. I think when we walked, we described where this would be, near the main part of the waterfall. So, a platform area built around existing trees, a prefabricated sauna, which is clad in metal, and has one entirely glazed wall, and then a main cedar hot tub set in the edge of the deck area. Our approach to and commitment to environmental stewardship is part of the equation for the project. Hopefully, you noticed that we're focused on small footprint homes, naturalized landscapes, and cluster approach to development to preserve as much as possible of the natural setting that we hope to build in, and that involves a permanent preservation of a third of the property as open space, but there'll be a lot more open space than just that, just the way we've been designing it. The homes themselves are manufactured of sustainably harvested cross-laminated timber. We're using high-efficiency energy systems, triple-blazed windows. Everything... Every decision that we try to make in the process is tilted towards an environmentally friendly approach to whatever the process is. And, you know, another example would be high-speed chargers will be located in all of the carports to enable residents to take advantage of charging for electric vehicles. If you flip forward. And, you know, the connection to the community, we're really making a very concerted effort to engage with all of the service providers that we need in the local community to create opportunities for businesses in the community, so architects, engineering, surveying, interior design, lighting design, builder, all local businesses in the greater Camden area. And we hope to continue that as we develop the community at the site with homeowners and continue to develop relationships and create opportunities for local businesses by curating activities and other connections for residents at the project with local businesses. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything from the board on that one?
I have a couple questions.
I have a couple of questions. One is, what, how are you heating these? Are they year-round? Are they summertime?
Year-round capable.
Year-round capable. So, how are they being heated?
With heat pumps.
Okay, so it's electrical?
Yeah, electric. We do have a fireplace, which optionally by the buyer could be a gas-powered fireplace or a...
That's a supplemental.
The reason I ask that question is, how often are big propane or gas or oil trucks going to be coming up the road?
We'll have some amount of propane-powered fireplaces that need to be filled, but it's a relatively modest use. We're not heating the units or running stoves or dryers or gas.
No oil trucks.
No oil trucks.
Can I just add that they do have to comply with the state's energy code as well, obviously?
Yeah.
Anything else? At this time? Okay. All right, thank you very much. This is the time where we will now go through the requirements of submission, determine whether or not the application is complete. So, that requires a review of the submissions in total. Just to clarify for all present, this really is the preliminary plan submission requirements. There will be further hearing for final submission, and so that's probably when we'll tackle the waiver as well, because we don't have the requisite five members of the board. So, going through the list, we've got a pretty good list here of what's required. So, we need for the application completeness, nine copies of the application and supporting documents. We've received that. Those have been received and distributed. A copy of the most recently recorded deed for the parcel. I noticed that was in the packet. Yep. Just a quick question on the, okay, and then C, all existing deed restrictions, rights of ways and other encumbrances, yes. Did we, did I, I didn't see anywhere the proposed deed restrictions as far as the preserving of the open space. Is that somewhere in the packet already? Did I miss that?
It is. It's in the covenants, or will be updated into the covenants.
Okay.
It's also a note on the subdivision plan that's verbatim, as required by the ordinance, for the open space, that says, "Common open space shall not be further divided or used for future building lots."
Okay.
Is that on the C1 sheet?
It's on the C1 sheet in the subdivision plan.
What is that? It's in the, it's in the...
The condominium document.
Yeah, that's where I am right now. So, I'm just looking for the number.
It's on page eight, where the common of the document...
Oh, yeah, common open space, got you there, okay.
And Ethan, we will have the town attorney review all those legal documents as well prior to final approval.
I appreciate that.
Jeremy, is there a...
Oh, perfect.
Can you hear us?
Oh, can you hear me?
We can. You were much desired, since we needed five to go over the waiver requirements, and we had just four, so good to see you, and thanks for coming.
I came home from a month on the road to a cold house.
Understood.
We're warming up, to the temperature's level.
Understood. We're just right now going through the appendix C, which is the plan submission requirements. I don't know if you, what you have there, are you working digitally? I would assume you don't have a paper packet.
Are you talking to Jim?
I was talking directly to Mark.
I am working digitally.
Yeah, so we're looking at the appendix C, which is major subdivision preliminary plan submission requirements. We're going to go ahead and, I think, complete that review before we go to the waiver, since we're already moving on it. So, we found number, letter D was in the condominium documents. So then, E is a written statement from the Camden wastewater superintendent that the district has the capacity to collect and treat the wastewater, or F, subsurface wastewater test pit analyses prepared by a licensed site evaluator. And where are we on the stormwater? We have...
The wastewater is...
Wastewater, sorry.
And we had that.
Yep. Wastewater's all set. A written statement from the water company that there's adequate supply and pressure for the subdivision and a statement approving the design of any extension of the water main.
Well, it's not applicable to the town water, but we have the...
Right.
...document from Haskell's well drilling.
Yep, good. A written statement from the fire chief that the water supply needs for fire protection has been adequately met and approving the location of any fire hydrants. I know there's a letter from the chief.
A letter from the chief about the road...
Yeah, I don't know if it's...
And the other one on...
March 24.
Yeah, the, in the...
Yep. Okay, we're just whipping through these, everything there. Waste, when the water supply is private wells, evidence of adequate groundwater supply, and that's with the well driller, Haskell's. Yep, got that. A written statement from the director of Midco Solid Waste Facility, the proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste.
We had that.
We got that in the packet. Agreements or other documents showing the manner in which open spaces are to be retained by the developer or lot owners are to be maintained. We've just discussed that earlier as well, but that's in there. If open space or other land is to be offered to the municipality, not applicable. Vehicular trip generation rate.
I remember seeing that.
Yeah, we have that from DOT, I think.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, on January 9, 2023.
Yep. Traffic impact analysis, also?
Yeah.
Yep. Left lane study analysis for multifamily or non-residential, not required. The subdivisions of condominium or cluster development, evidence that all requirements relative to establishment of a homeowners' association or condominium owners' association have been met, including bylaws, and that all other requirements of chapter 290 zoning pertaining to cluster development have been met. Homeowners' Association of Condominium documents shall clearly state that the Association of Condominium shall properly maintain private roadways serving the subdivision after developers legally relinquish that responsibility until such time as the town may accept them as public roads. And that is definitely up there with the...
In there with the covenants and the bylaws and all that.
Okay. So, I think that's the application portion, finding that complete, so we have a motion on that.
Make a motion that the submissions have been, or that the plan is sufficiently complete to go to public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second.
And a second.
I have a comment or question that...
Sure.
That appendix C also includes a location map and preliminary plan and street design plans.
Yeah, I was going to go through those individually, but we could do a motion each for each or do it all? Do you want to just go, keep going through it and then do it as one big motion?
Yeah, I'd say we do one whole motion for all.
Sure, okay. That's fine with me. So going on to number two, the location map. The location map shall be drawn to scale, not more than one inch equals 400 feet. Show the proposed subdivision in relation to the general surrounding area. The map shall show all areas within 1,000 feet of any property line, proposed subdivision, including existing subdivisions, location and names of existing streets, zoning boundaries and designations, and outline of the proposed subdivision and owner's remaining contiguous land.
We have those maps, for sure.
We do have the maps. Number three is a preliminary plan. Preliminary plan. Nine copies of an accurate scale map of the parcel, not more than one inch equals 50 feet, containing all the information from the site inventory map. The following requirements may be shown on multiple sheets when necessary. I'm not going to go and read each one of these. Actually, I guess I will. Standard boundary survey with bearings and distances showing the entire parcel and all contiguous land in common ownership of the last five years per title 30A MRSA section 4401. We've got the boundary survey.
We've got those, yeah.
Yep. Name and record of owners, name of record owners for all budding properties, check.
Sure.
Contour lines at the intervals specified by the board showing elevations in relation to mean sea level, and we did get the...
Those have been adjusted, yeah.
Yep, we got the additional topo lines. Stormwater plan showing ditches, culverts, detention and retention areas. So, we do have a plan. Where are we at in the plan discussion, Jeremy? I mean, the applicant did mention a little bit of back and forth, but we were going to have a separate person review, is that...
Yeah, that's who they're talking about, Chris Baldwin from Cumberland County Stormwater Conservation District.
Just going back and forth for some final stuff with Chris and...
And I think Will mentioned it earlier. He's, for the most part, satisfied with everything. It's really some construction details, as I understand, that need to be just tweaked a little bit. And we did get a follow-up email from Chris today and a follow-up one from Andrew. You guys have been provided that stuff. So, I'm confident we're good moving forward on that regard.
But that would be...
And they did get a stormwater permit, permit by rule from the DEP as well.
Right, right, that I know, yeah. But, so we just need to have that finished up before we can do the final approval.
Yeah, and we'll also, just so you know, we'll have a stormwater maintenance agreement too, as part of the package as well.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, so that's a check. Boundary and designation of zoning districts, yes. Existing streets abutting in the subdivision, yes. Boundary of any flood hazard area and 100-year flood elevation as depicted by municipality's flood insurance rate map.
Yep.
Yep, we got that one.
Can I just add really quick about the stormwater? One thing. Those are challenging sometimes to run on maintenance, and we are gonna, I think I'm going to make a recommendation that it be included on the actual subdivision plan, so that's enforceable by the town, should the, you know, the homeowners' association not maintain the stormwater infrastructure, so that we have some good teeth that we can make sure that it's maintained forever.
Okay, is that something we need to put as a condition down the...
Well, yeah, I think that's something we should do, yep. Likely that will include a requirement to do like a five-year recertification or something, that they provide something to us that it's actually been done every five years.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Areas adjacent, within or adjacent to the proposed subdivision which has been identified as high or moderate value wildlife habitat by the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries or Wildlife or within the comprehensive plan. If any portion of the subdivision is located within an area designated as critical natural area by the comprehensive plan or the Maine Natural Areas Program, the plan shall indicate appropriate measures for the preservation of the values that qualify the site for such designation. We had a few discussions on this last time around in the preliminary meeting.
But we have the letter from the biologist and...
Yep.
And it's marked on that.
And I'm sure that'll be something that will come up in the public hearing aspect when we go over this. But, we had a site walk out there, and there's been some discussion around preserving the land that is designated more, per the state's biologist, the more critical habitat towards the park, and the, was it an acre or so of concern sort of in the front, not necessarily, on his opinion, not necessarily critical. So, we at least have your application and submission on that. So, sewage disposal is to be accomplished by subsurface wastewater disposal systems. Location of all test pits on the site, and we've seen those, all indicated. Location of any open space be preserved, and a description of proposed improvements and its management, and we've seen that.
Yep.
All parcels of land proposed to be dedicated to public use in the conditions of such dedication, that is NA. Provision for controlling erosion and sedimentation, including measures to capture sediment during construction and measures to stabilize the soil. We definitely have provision submitted.
Yep.
That may be another issue that we want to just make, double-check on. Location and method of disposal for land clearing and construction debris.
That's kind of the same as the last, I feel. It's addressed in the application.
Right, okay. And location and name and wits of existing streets, we have that. Okay, and then we're down to the number four, the street design plans, detailed construction drawings showing a plan view, profile, and typical cross-section of proposed street. The plan show, view shall be at a scale no more than one inch equals 50 feet.
Yep, we got those.
Got that, okay. The vertical scale of the profile shall be one inch equals no more than 50 feet. The plan shall include the following information. I'm going to go through, we've seen all of this with the plan, and we can address that as we get to it. Finally, additional information. The planning board may require additional information when it's determined necessary to meet the criteria of the state subdivision statute, title 30A MRSA section 4401, including high-intensity soil survey by registered soil scientists, hydrogeologic assessment for subdivision not served by a sewer if any part of the subdivision is over sand and gravel, aquifer, hydrogeologic assessment if the average density is more than one dwelling unit per 100,000 square feet, hydrogeologic assessment if the board determines potential adverse impacts on groundwater quality. And so far, we have not asked for any of those.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, now we can entertain a motion.
Make a motion that the application is complete.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mark? It's an aye or nay?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes. John?
I have a comment and then a vote.
Okay.
I take comfort that the town attorney is going to review the covenants and restrictions, because I'm not an expert in that regard. And I take comfort in the other, I'll call it, expert review of the stormwater management plans that we've had other staff members take a look at. So, I enjoyed looking at it all, and yes.
Okay, thank you. Crystal?
I vote aye that the application is complete.
Thank you.
And I have a question before I vote, and that is, with the covenants, will we have an opportunity to question some of the things in the covenant?
All we're doing right now is saying that, yes, the application is...
Yep, it's there in full.
We will be going through each of these things individually.
Then we go into the application.
Yeah, yeah. And so, that's an aye from me.
Aye.
And it's an aye from me. Motion carries. All right, so at this time...
Back the waiver.
We're going to go revisit what we tried to start with, which was the waiver requirement or the waiver hearing request. So, the request here for the waiver is to have a narrower-than-standard road, if I understand it correctly, from 18 feet down to 12 feet.
In one section.
In one section, and that's the one that services, as you indicated, is it basically Fostail Lane on the map?
Yes.
Yep, and so...
The lower portion of Fostail Lane, if you go past the parking area.
Yep, yep, and...
Two units.
Two units are served by that narrower road, and we have a letter from Chief Farley, the concern being, of course, that make sure that emergency vehicles could access the property there. And I'm just shuffling through with all these papers for, okay, here I have Chris Farley's letter, so I'm going to go ahead and just read it into the record. It lists all of the things, and he just wrote on the bottom, "Based on the meeting today with Will Gartley, the plan submitted by Gartley-Dorsky dated 03/22/2023, we approve the information provided for vehicle access and the listern for, cistern for water supply." So, that's the chief's take on that part of it.
Actually, I think what you're wanting is the document from the, that's relevant to the waiver, where he says, "Approve the waiver based on map dated 3/28," which segment identified Fostail Lane.
Okay. I got the wrong packet right in front of me.
Well, it's, he has two, he's got two documents to us, one about the waiver and one about the subdivision as a whole.
Right, great, thank you. Okay. Okay, so at this point, we, I, I guess I will offer the applicant, just, I know we all pretty much understand it, but I'll give you an opportunity to explain what you're requesting, and then we'll open it for public hearing.
Well, thank you, Ethan. So, yeah. Turn the mic on. So, that's about a 350-foot section of drive that accesses two units. There's an existing woods road at that location, and we're trying to place this road on that. And really, the request comes down to just minimizing the impact of that area and reducing the area that, that has to be graded and cleared in order to build the road for those two units. We do have parking at the end and a space for turning around, but allowing us to keep the road at 12 feet with two-foot shoulders, so you still have really a total of 16 opposed to 18 and two-foot shoulders, which is 22, just allows us to minimize the impact to that area. Again, because it's only to two units. If it was a road that was gonna potentially be continued, I think it would be a different story, but this is, this will be the end, that road won't go any further.
Yeah, so no, no further plans at all to, to extend that road?
No, no. And that's, that existing woods road is, will become the path that takes you out into some of the open space and also to the sauna hot tub area.
Right. And there's never, never any plan to allow any vehicular traffic down that?
No.
That far?
I think there's a note on the plan, too, that there will be a posting there. There's something about boulder, like...
No vehicle access beyond the point sign of, of some sort, and then we, we show a couple of boulders at the end of that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, let's go into the, there's my documents floating around here. This is the waiver one I was looking for. And I'm looking for the public hearing process.
I think that's it there. Oh, you're, you need to...
Yeah, I have a little shindig that I get to read first. I got this one here, so...
That's the process of public hearing.
So, here's the procedure for public hearing. I did kind of skip over it or summarize it before, but we had Jeremy introduce, we had the applicant introduce. Then the board will see comments from members of the public who wish to speak or ask questions. Questions and comments will not be taken from the floor, so that all comments can be heard by those in attendance as well as those watching the broadcast or live stream of the meeting. Speakers must come forward to the microphone or identify themselves for the record by name and address. All comments and questions of the applicant must be directed through the chair. The chair may exclude irrelevant, unduly repetitious comments. Then the first public comment period will close. Members of the board will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant and/or the public. Second public comment will be open for the purpose of hearing new and relevant information only. The second public comment period will then close, and if members have no further questions or comments, the public hearing will be closed. The board will then begin deliberation. There will be no further comment from the applicant or the public. A board member may ask for clarification, but it is not appropriate for the public to interject during the board deliberation phase of the review. So, at this point, we've gone through the first three steps, and so now, we're really ready for, if there's anybody in the public who wants to comment specifically to the waiver issue. Yep, sir?
Not to the waiver.
Okay. Anyone? You okay? Come on up.
I want the turn on the mic and sign in. Your name, thank you.
Just a little button on there you press to make it green.
My name is Chris Nolan, I'm a Camden resident, and I live really close to where this property is looking to be developed. The question I have has to do with the waiver piece that refers to where the road is looking to be 65 feet to the river as compared to the 75 feet. As someone who has, you know, been up in that area and also with interest because of the properties near it, I do have a concern that, and a question about how can, you know, the viability of that, given the steepness of the land next to the, next to the river. I'm not an engineer, and nor do I intend to be one, but just by general observation in looking at how that road is, and I know that the road is very soft as well, I know there, you know, just maintenance vehicles or whatever, but it is certainly very soft, especially in the spring. And the river runs pretty, pretty hard in the spring as well, and there is already some erosion on that area, and that would be, again, where the road is looking to go, to be 64 feet as compared with 75 feet away from the river. That part of the waiver is what I'm questioning at this point.
Any questions for the, Mr. Nolan? Anyone? Okay, you may, you may sit down. I know we discussed this.
I could comment on that a little bit.
Yeah, I'd like to hear a little, and I don't see it in the actual portion of the waiver that we're discussing.
The waiver is actually just about the width.
Correct.
Not the setback.
Correct, and we talked about this at the pre-application meeting. The existing woods road is not being, the location is where it is, right? It's been there, and this is the area we're talking about, right about from, right about from there to there, right? Pretty much right in front of the, this carport or whatever that is, and then this structure. Yeah, that's not a waiver that the planning board reviews. That is a determination that's made by the code and planning office, and we okayed them to use this existing footprint of this existing woods road. You know, it's a much less impactful to the environment to utilize that existing woods road for their road, and that's an allowed, we can do it, it's an, again, existing woods road, woods road, and they're having a less impact on the, on the environment rather than doing, having to, you know, go further north. Likely they'd get into blasting, it would be a much bigger impact, but that is not a waiver standard that the board does, that's the code and planning office, and that's how that happened. We did talk about it a little bit at the last, at the pre-application meeting.
Yeah, I saw it in part of the document.
Yep. And again, we're talking this stretch, right, right here to there.
Yep.
About 64 feet or so.
And just if I may, if I'm walking the site, as much as I don't want to see anything disturbed or even anything close to the brook, there's almost no reasonable interpretation that would say that we should move it further away and blast into the, into the cliff, which they're certainly, you know, they're certainly entitled to do, but this is a woods road that's pretty substantial. I'm sure it's soft. There's obviously gonna be some work done on that road. It's not just gonna be like, start driving cars on it, but, but, you know, from my take on it, it just, it, it did seem to be the smartest and, and least impactful option.
And I, I would add that at the pre-application meeting, Allison McKeller talked about the brook and about brook drought. I did meet with, and I was asked by the board and volunteered to meet with, the Trout Unlimited. We met with them, went over the plan with them. They're very familiar with this, this brook, and again, we went over it with them, Shenley and I did, and they had no issues with that. They weren't concerned. Obviously, they're very concerned about water quality, but we talked about this whole area, nothing's being done in this area, and they're preserving, you know, significant area along the brook, so they were okay with it. Just throwing that out there as well.
I have a quick question regarding that.
Sure.
What about during construction? I mean, I, I don't see any problem with it after the fact, that, but during construction, as we know, construction vehicles can often be very crude in the way they, you know, they, they get things done. Is there a possible precaution that can be taken, or how, how will that be handled? Because usually, there's an area of, of non-construction or, or, you know, that's...
Some, some, a good deal of that, I think, is covered in some of the stormwater discussion, and there's even some stuff about construction and stormwater.
And here's the, here's the sediment barrier that they're proposing.
Yeah.
This is an erosion control. I don't know, I didn't look at the specs, I was letting Chris Baldwin do that.
...from the road.
Is this an erosion control muck berm? Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, well, it's a double along the resource area, we're proposing a double, so most likely there'll be a silt fence, and there'll be an erosion control berm along the face of that, in those critical areas. And the, the goal of that is to place it right at the edge of the existing road. We've shifted the proposed road up a little bit so that we can kind of use the edge of the existing woods road as kind of our sediment area, and then kind of stabilize our soil right there from that point, and then push the road north on that plan a little bit to get it away. So, we don't plan on doing any disturbance beyond where the existing woods road is.
And we will, there is a requirement now for erosion control inspections to be done prior to disturbing, so before they start actually doing the roadwork, we'll be out there doing inspections, and I believe they, the applicant did mention at the pre-application meeting that they would be hiring Gartley and Dorsky to do inspections throughout the project, and that may be something that the board wants to consider as part of the condition of the approval. Because of the, you know, I think, I think that's appropriate in this case, being in such proximity to a, a pretty significant cold water fishery, brook.
Yeah, I think we all want to make sure that the water, you know, is, is preserved, and I, frankly, I, I think the applicant does, too, but, yeah, I think that's something definitely to consider, is whether or not we want to add a, a condition on there for inspections. But at some point, we've talked about this with other projects and everything, there is a, an erosion control ordinance in place, and it is up to the good people of our town to enforce and inspect, so, and, and they've been taking that pretty seriously. Is there any more public comment, Allison?
Allison McKeller, 79 Mechanic Street. So, I, too, was confused about the waiver request, the, at that, you know, pre-application meeting, what I had seen and heard described, you know, was the waiver request to have the road within, within that 75-foot buffer, and then looking at the responses that Gartley and Dorsky provided to the stormwater questions from the independent reviewer, you know, one of the questions, one of the responses also referred to a waiver as kind of a justification for the road being within that 75 feet. So, I think that is, you know, was just like a little bit confusing here. And I just, I guess I want to read, I sent all of this to you this afternoon, but it's a little bit more just about the context of, you know, why, why would, why, why you need to go ahead and approve the waiver today, and I really appreciate that the board is taking this extra time to have some independent reviews, but just, I guess, I, I wrote something that was a little bit more comprehensive, but in terms of just the waiver, from the agenda, it appears that the central matter before you today is the request for a waiver for some of the road requirements. Initially, I read that a waiver of the setback requirement from Spring Brook was being requested, but I have since learned that it is being treated as a planning and codes office decision to consider the woods road already there as an existing road. Although it generally makes good environmental sense to maintain existing roads rather than creating new disturbances, I would question whether the existing condition, conditions constitute a road or a trail, and so I would, you know, hope that maybe the board would just talk a little bit about how you determine what an existing road is. The unstable conditions along the bank of the stream call for further review. In this case, the existing woods road is perched at the edge of an eroding bank where the channel bends. Streams are in a perpetual state of evolution due to the natural process of erosion. While erosion accelerated by human development should be mitigated and avoided, some erosion is part of the natural process. It creates diversity in the stream substrate and riparian zone, which provides essential habitat for a variety of species, especially brook trout. As headwater streams move from higher elevation bedrock surfaces to more moderate slopes, the channel begins to meander, and the shape and curve of the stream changes over time. This is the case for Spring Brook at the section of road in question. The curve of Spring Brook has been slowly migrating in the direction of the road, and it will continue to do so. Even now, the bank is severely undercut, undermining the soil under the road. If the goal of the waiver is to allow the, and so this, some of this I wrote when I thought the waiver was requesting something different. If the goal of the waiver is to allow the existing road to remain rather than creating new disturbances, the bank of the, of the stream should be further evaluated to be sure that it can be resilient to the type of activity proposed. Although setbacks are generally measured from the normal high-water mark of a stream, in this case, normal is difficult to define. If this road is allowed to be further developed, it may be only a matter of time before the entire bank will require major stabilization. As it stands, the proximity of the road to the stream bank seems likely to prevent the installation of erosion control measures during construction. The planning board should verify that the existing woods road can be upgraded to a subdivision road without requiring armoring of the stream bank. My understanding is that the planning board's site visit that occurred was during the winter months after heavy snowfall. Under these conditions, I believe neighbors are correct in asserting that the site conditions would be very difficult to properly evaluate. Existing erosion would have been largely obscured by the snow, and the frozen ground may have appeared more erosion resistant than is actually the case. Now that the planning board has more complete plans and the snow is melting, it seems that a second site visit would be appropriate. A third-party review also of the boundaries of the stream may also be in order. There is discrepancy between various sources, and the normal high-water mark of Spring Brook is subject to some interpretation. The stream is well-known for its quick transformation into a raging torrent that sweeps away large trees. It appears that significant, it also appears that significant tree removal in the riparian zone is planned, perhaps the maximum amount permissible undershore land zoning restrictions, I'm not sure. This removal of vegetation will further accelerate the erosion and lead to additional loss of trees. There will, will there be a requirement that the level of tree canopy in the final approved plan is maintained as older trees eventually die? The shading of the stream is one of the few reasons that it stays cold enough to sustain native brook trout. In addition, applicants made reference to an early meeting, in an early meeting, to cleaning up the stream of fallen trees, but the board should note that dead wood and other natural debris is generally considered beneficial to stream habitats. The existing tree canopy and even the dead trees in the stream are one of the most important beneficial attributes. It seems that the applicants are committed to integrating with nature as much as possible, and I was encouraged by the initial discussion of possibly elevating the structures on post to minimize the ecological footprint. This seems like something that would be worthwhile to pursue. Another consideration is whether there could be protections that would prevent the use of pesticides and herbicides due to the special habitat provided by the brook. The additional lighting is likely to attract brown-tailed moth, which will then likely inspire an appeal from residents for either tree removal or pesticide application, both of which would be detrimental to the adjacent area. Ticks are another consideration that should be mitigated in a way that doesn't impact the natural resource. The Camden Hills, including the area proposed for development, is designated as an area of statewide ecological significance, and I have a link to that full document, but the, but, and then I also sent just, you know, some quotes from that, but, you know, basically, this is an area that's not just special to Camden, it has statewide ecological significance. These roadless blocks are increasingly less common in coastal areas, and I just, I think that this is a case where the board can make it better by taking longer, and that you should do that if possible and take an additional site walk. I'm certainly not disputing that the applicants have the right to do this, and it seems if they can do it in the way they're proposing, it would, you know, be a very positive thing, but also the, the question of the rights of, the public rights of way in the past trails, I sent some information about that, but it seems that if you approve one aspect of this tonight, it might be limiting in future, and so that's really my only concern with the road waiver at this point, that a slightly wider road further away from the stream may be in the long-term best interest, if that's within the planning board's purview. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public have any comments? Sir?
I agree with the...
You have to come to the podium, please.
It's not on the waiver, but it's on the project itself.
Could you come to the podium?
Yeah.
Yep.
There will be comment time on the project itself at the next hearing.
Oh, okay. Well, I definitely agree with Allison on that, because my family's owned land abutting this whole project since 1953, and the brook trout, I fish for brook trout in that, in that stream, and they are quite a ways up in there, and it's true, in the summertime, the brook dries up, but the pools don't. Fish is still there. I'm just concerned about the construction, stuff will go into the, into the brook and stuff like that, but I, I totally agree, because, I mean, I've known that area, I've lived there almost all my life, so, yep.
That's, that's good to know. You're the first person who's been able to say for sure there's brook trout in there. Allison's been telling us, but, yeah.
I can, I can get your pictures, yeah.
No, no, I, it's, it's good to know, and, and I think we all, we all are very concerned about, you know, preserving that brook.
Yeah.
So, so that's, that's, that's great.
In addition to that, I've hunted deer all my life.
Yeah.
And I can show you areas where the deer are. And I'm sure, Ed, you know, they walk that road, and they go right down across Route One because their street's smart, and they go right down to the ocean.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, I think, you know, definitely this is going to have an impact on the wildlife.
Sure.
For sure. So, I have more comments on the project.
Yeah, we'll save those for, if we get down there today.
Make sure you put your name because you didn't say.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry about that. Bruce Tholen, 520 Belfast Row.
Thanks, Bruce.
Yep.
With the, with the board interest, I do have a picture of what that looks like in the spring.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to just bring it up and sort of wave it at us, that'd be great.
Could you maybe, could you email it to me too, so I can put it into the record?
Sure.
What it looks like right now.
This is probably, yes, this is probably what it looks like right now. We are, in this point, walking back towards Route One.
Yep.
Where this is about the stretch of road.
Yep.
That would be.
Widen.
If a saw be the one, the part that would be widened, that is right over the bridge. But yeah, I'll go ahead and email that.
If you don't mind.
Oh, I don't mind at all.
Say your dog.
Yes. My daughter's dog. But just so you guys can see, this is, this is probably, probably eight years back. But I know before you guys started this.
Train or versus the dogs?
The road, the road that the dogs were on.
I'm just shuffling so many papers today. I'm a mess. I'm not in my zone. Where's my process? There it is. This is the one I need. Okay, anyone else in the public have any comments? Okay, seeing none, I will, I will now go ahead and close the first public comment period. And now the board has an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant and/or any of the public who spoke.
I have a few.
Okay.
Chrisel? Mostly just, I know we discussed some of it at the pre-app, but what's the road surface material on this stretch of road going to be? Or in the whole project, but particularly on this?
Right now, we have it proposed as gravel. We've had discussions about making that potentially asphalt due to the steep slopes of it. It'll hold that place better. But right now, we're proposing gravel for that section.
And so based on the condition of what it is, I mean, I've, we've heard talk about it being soft, but I know a woods road after one winter can be, seem soft just from vegetation. So what's your expectation of what, how much work is going to need to be done on that stretch to get it ready?
The road elevations are going to be, it's going to be elevated through this section. It's in the low spot, you know. So what we're going to do is essentially, we're going to remove a few inches of the existing material, place down a geotexile fabric that'll keep the soft soils from penetrating into the good soil. And then the good soil and road will be built on top of that. You know, we're trying to minimize, let's say, we'll take as little as we can. But that will firm that base, road base up, and the fabric will prevent that poor soil from penetrating into the good soil, if you will. That way, we can kind of avoid having to cut it all out of there and dig down deep. We can leave as much as we can in that location.
I can tell you that the woods roads are, weren't very well-built when they were built.
They, they are. That's, that is one thing. I mean, they're, they're drivable. I mean, granted, there are certain times that, like probably now.
Nothing's drivable, right?
Yeah, right now. But no, I, yeah, I've seen, I mean, you've seen vehicles down in those areas for various purposes, you know, the other parts of the year.
But that particular stretch has about six inches of moss on it. So when you walk, I mean, feels quite.
Right. I mean, it's, you know, I was thinking about it, that, you know, it's, it's held up for however long since that woods road was put in. And a lot of those ones that are on signs of, are often, they're well-done. I was just curious how much your work would be disturbing the top surface.
Yeah, there'll be, yeah, 18 inches of gravel underneath the road for the ordinance. Yeah, I think 18.
That's in the cross section.
Right. I mean, we know that from the road plan. I was just thinking of what you're escaping. Yeah.
We believe that road historically was used to pull gravel out at some point.
Out of that quarry.
Was mined in there.
Whatever's in there. Yeah. Okay.
Anything else? Oh, go ahead, John.
Allison made some comments about Spring Brook and how the, that particular curve in the stream bed might be migrating or has the potential of migrating. What are your thoughts on that potential?
As far as the stream migrating?
Correct. The, the outside of the bend there that is coming closest to the road that you're getting the, requesting the waiver from.
I can tell you that on the opposite, on the opposite bank facing this area, there is erosion. There's a, there's a portion of the cliff that's kind of sheared off. But that's on the other side.
The southern side.
But I'm not, I'm not aware of any.
That bank is pretty heavily forested down to the, to the brook. So, I mean, that's going to help slow that down.
Yeah. Correct, connected to that, to John's question, to follow, sorry not to interrupt, but there was also a question about how much is going to be removed vegetation from that hillside on, on the, on the bank of the stream, on the north side of the stream.
The intent is to not touch the vegetation on the downhill side. I mean, that would be the worst.
So we had the forester mark the property for forest health. We've shared the plan with Jeremy. Jeremy asked that we go back and have him do a particular study along, along the shoreline area, using the official method to do that. We've done that. We've done all the tree counts.
Could you turn on that mic there?
Sure.
Yeah. And Will, I think yours is off too.
That's Ed Hanson, 440 Belfast Row.
Yeah.
So, so the, we completed all the forestry studies. The trees were marked. After he did the detailed shoreline evaluation, we went back and re-marked, I think, two trees that really shouldn't be taken. But everything else was, was quite well within the parameters with the trees that were marked. With that said, we've taken probably half of the trees that were marked. So there are trees there now, if you go down, you'll see blue marks on it. We chose to keep, even though the forester had said we should take them for forest health. But that's about the extent of what we plan to do.
So all the, all the trees taken out have already been taken, essentially? Okay.
So for road construction.
Yeah.
On the downhill side, there's, there's no, it's one of the reasons we asked for the waiver is to not get into making that wider there.
Right.
And could you, you mentioned that you're going to sort of have a bit of a berm on the southern end of that road. So then will it be somewhat graded, will the road have a bit of grade away from that edge for any?
Yeah, that's the intent, is to kind of pitch it back into the.
That little low area and all that.
Yep.
And that's in some of the stormwater.
To the north, correct.
That's in some of the stormwater.
And we, what we're doing is we're, we're doing a lot of French drains through that section because there's no real clean way to, we don't want to put a big culvert in there, run water right over the bank. So we're doing a lot of French drains, picking up a perimeter drain, picking it up along the edge of the road, and we're discharging it through small underground pipes to allow it to kind of run through there and then be controlled, slow discharge.
So along the brook area, most of the trees that we took were dead or dying. The, the foresters recommended, and the inland fisheries and wildlife also recommend that we take the hemlocks because they're, they're all badly infected and don't have long to live. And with those trees, if they, if they die and they fall over, it opens the bank up and you do get a significant erosion problem. So we decided to take those for forest health. And as far as taking, you know, removing trees from the brook, we don't have any plans at this point to remove any trees from the brook. If they're there, they're, we're keeping them there.
That'd be a heck of a project.
And the rest of the property, we're keeping quite a few dead trees specifically for habitat as well.
Were you done, John, or did you have something?
I was just going to say, I think during construction, and this is something we can get to, I think it's important to, in sensitive areas, and I'm sure you guys understand this, do the work and then keep going, like finish this area and then move on. I don't want another, let's say, middle school project.
Right. You don't want a whole area opened that can't be controlled.
Right. So I think that's something we can probably condition the approval on too.
Essentially.
And just so people out there know, I mean, what we're talking about is so they don't come in, build, try to build the entire road all at one time without stabilizing it, stabilize it in sections, and then move on to the rest of the road? Does that make sense to everyone?
It's very steep slopes up there, you know. The whole side's steep, so it's going to be imperative that they.
Yeah.
They do it like that and in sections to make sure pieces are stabilized in between storm events, to make sure nothing, there's no surprises up through there for the entire site.
And so our, our third party, Chris Baldwin, did look at like this level lip spreader here and these underdrains that are daylighting. He did look at all these. So I just keep that in mind. He is reviewing these. And I think what Andrew was saying, he's going to try to pitch the road this way.
Yeah.
Right? So that it can get into some underdrains and then come out this way eventually. So it's not, everything's not, normally you crown the road.
Right.
So half of the road, half the water goes this way, the other half goes that way. I think the intent is to get everything to go back towards the property, the homes.
Slipping uphill.
Yeah.
And John, did you have anything further? You're all set. Chrisel, you?
I was just, just in terms of the, do you have a sense of what the foundations on those two, the last two houses are going to be?
You're speaking to E1 and E2.
Yeah, will those mostly be footings or?
Yeah, yes. At this point, Garland Dorfski's also been doing the engineering on foundations, and the structures are going to require footing. So we have hoped to do some pylons, some, some.
But not full basement, I guess is my question.
No, no. I think the most will be frost wall and energy code compliant.
I'm just particularly thinking of those two, those last two on the left, as where that water is draining into that low area.
Right, right.
And having concrete walls under the frost barrier would be preferable not.
Right, right. Understand.
They're doing amazing things with helical piles now, too. So, I mean, that's another option where you could really minimize impacts.
We've looked at the, we've discussed that with the builder. The, the soil is, is very rocky. It's very, very difficult to find a place to, to drive anything.
I understand that, too.
It's main, that's all. Did you, did you have anything?
I do. I have a question regarding the corner of Nord Haven. Well, first, I applaud you for minimizing the, the road area and for trying to keep as many trees as possible. But the corner of Nord Haven and this Fosdale lane, what is the visibility around that curb? And the reason I ask this is because I live on a private road that is about 16 feet wide, and we have about eight full-time residents. But the amount of traffic that goes up and down that road is unbelievable. And this is a very steep, steep road. So I guess my question is, and I see that there is a parking area right there which would allow for some, you know, leeway in, if two cars meet or whatever. But someone coming down that road, you know, is there potential, potential for a mirror or something so that?
So the question is somebody coming down Nord Haven, will they see somebody coming down Fosdale? Is that the?
Well, if someone is turning into that road.
Oh, into Fosdale?
Yes, yes. Where it narrows, right? 12 feet?
Well, it, it doesn't narrow until you get past all that parking. So we've intentionally.
So, so my question still stands is if someone, let's say a truck, a propane truck is turning onto Fosdale, and you have someone coming out of their driveway down towards Nord Haven, will, will the two see each other? I don't know how many trees are there. I don't know how.
The uphill of that curve, right there where that intersection is, we've got a ditch line there. And so that area is, is completely open and visible across that, that curve.
Is this where you were referring to?
I'm talking about coming down from the driveways from, say you live in one of the two up at the top.
Right. So the parking and driveways are up here?
Nope, they're up Fosdale.
Coming here?
Yes.
So if you're coming down this way?
Yes, exactly.
Will you see a car that's coming this way or somebody that's turning here?
Correct.
Well, so this is probably the most open part of the entire area.
I think that's the only visible place on, of.
I know.
It was, it was actually intentionally designed to accommodate the emergency vehicle turnaround. So it's overly wide, it's overly long, the grades are very minor. I think they're like three to 5% through that area. And there will be a full stop at the end of Fosendale. So there'll be, there'll be a stop sign there that prevents people from kind of driving out to control traffic in that location.
Yeah.
It's about the only flat piece on the property.
Is that where the skitter was when we walked?
Yeah, right. It's right, it's right to the left. As we came out of the field, at the top of the hill, right to the left, it was kind of flat in through that one little area. That's where we have this whole.
Kind of open field.
Intersection. It still is. Yes, yep.
There's enough visibility going up that road.
There's plenty. Yeah, yep.
That was my only question.
Good question.
That's a good question. Okay, I don't have anything right now for the applicants or the public. So we will move to the second public comment period. If anybody from the public wishes to speak or has any questions based on what we've heard, obviously, we're looking only for any new testimony or questions. And again, we're still on just a waiver.
Okay.
Yep. Shanley, did you have something? Oh, okay. Yep. Okay, so seeing no public comments, Jeremy, you have nothing online or anything like that, of course? Yep. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period. No more further questions from the public. And the board now will begin deliberation.
I'm going to be supportive of the waiver when the time comes. I am influenced by the idea that it's an existing forest road. Had an opportunity to walk that in the wintertime. And the concept of draining away from the creek and narrowing the road is all sort of a package of approaching this in what I think is a responsible fashion. So I echo some of the comments made about the importance of erosion control during the construction of the road and anything that could beef up the language regarding that. By the time this subdivision comes back for its final approval, I'd appreciate. But I'll, I'll be voting yes on this waiver.
Okay. Do you have anything you wanted?
Yeah, my, my general sense is, as John said, I mean, to me, you know, especially because what we're actually discussing is a waiver to let them make the road narrower than our, than we're requiring. So what you're asking for is to make a smaller road and be less impactful, is always something that appeals to me. Rather, you know, usually we get, hear people want to make a wider road. And so it's safe, it's less impacted by, you know, so I think it's great. I think it's, use what's there. And as John says, we walked it and, you know, it is a steep bank, but there's no sign, you know, as I said, that road clearly has held up for a long time. So.
Okay. Did you have anything?
No, I, I too, I support this. I think, you know, the construction has to be very cautiously done. And I think the question was answered about the visibility and, you know, two cars meeting on that road.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
I agree with many of the comments of other board members. I think it's a well-designed plan there, and I do, Jeremy, I'm supportive of it.
Okay. And it's just for purposes of process, this really isn't the appropriate time to put the step-by-step condition on the road construction, really. This is just, we'll just address the waiver now and then do that down the road if we, if the board so decides. Yeah, so I too, for me, it's, it's, it seems common sense, an existing road, not making it larger, serving only two houses, really, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about here. And the sign-off from the, from the police chief. And primary concern is going to always be, and I think we put the applicant on notice, the erosion control. That's, I think everybody's really concerned, including the applicants, about the, the quality of that brook. And, and I, I, I think that everybody would be well-served to, to take note that that's going to be an issue going forward. But from my perspective, a smaller road, serving two houses, sign-off from the police or the, the fire chief as far as the, the safety issue, I'm okay with it. So I think we know how this is going to go, but entertain a motion and a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Murray?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chrisel?
Aye. Aye.
Mitya? Aye. And it's an aye from me, so moved. The waiver is approved, and that takes care of that portion of the old business that is now complete. So we're only at 6:30, that was, we're moving along pretty well. How long, how long do we, we, how much appetite do we have for this tonight? Keep moving?
Yeah.
Not surprisingly, the applicants are.
Oh, they're, they're anxious to keep moving.
They've got lots of energy.
I mean, we, we have, we have, you know, we won't be able to get to final approval of the entire plant because we haven't seen the final stormwater.
Right.
Stuff, so.
We can open the hearing?
We can, we can open the hearing on the, do we, we need to have a little introduction, Jeremy, from you, or we've already had the applicant's, you know, general introduction?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to just remember what the primary, the purpose of the preliminary plan is, and it's to provide enough information to the board, this is from the ordinance, for preliminary determination that the proposed subdivision will meet the approval standards of Article 8 Title and Title 30A MRSA 4401, which is the state subdivision standards. So if you want to maybe roll over to the approval standards, it might be a pertinent time to do that.
You're speaking to, based on the preliminary plan approving the standard?
Well, again, just looking at what the ordinance says, does the preliminary plan provide enough information for the board for preliminary determination that proposed subdivision will meet those approval standards? And this is where I think it's important to maybe just go through them and just, you know, and this is, we're talking about in your code 235-8.1 and, you know, on, so we're talking about pollution, there's standards that you have to look at.
Yep.
And I think now is the time to go through that so that the, if anything, you know.
Is of concern.
Is of concern. You can get it into the final.
I'm following you, what you, I'm following what you're saying there.
Makes sense?
It does.
Okay.
Makes great sense.
You have the copy of the applicant's submission.
Yes. Right. Yep.
And Ethan, if you'd like, I have the copy of the subdivision ordinance right here, I don't know if you have it in front of you.
I do have my, my grand book.
I'll borrow your copy.
You'll borrow? Okay, those are the approval standards, and that's, those are consistent with the state subdivision statute.
I'm getting so many papers today.
So much paper.
Lots of paper, we're going to try to get rid of these nine copies of everything eventually and try to get things digitally and maybe just six copies or something paper.
Lot of paper.
You have it for 235-8.1?
You got it there, Chrisel?
So?
Yeah.
Is that in, is that in our, our code here, Jeannie?
It's in, I gave you a copy of their submission, which goes through all of them.
Yeah, yeah, and I've got this one.
Andrew, you know what page your, that stuff is on your?
Out here.
Can you just maybe go to it?
Twenty of the PDF.
So if you go to.
Twenty?
Basically page.
Okay.
Well, but you can go a couple pages in.
Starting again.
Starts with pollution.
Yep. Okey-dokey. All right, so covering the review standards, first one is, the approval standards is 235-8.1, the state standard. Proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution and making the determination the board shall at least consider the elevation of the land above sea level and its relation to flood plains, the nature of soils and subsoils and their ability to adequately support waste disposal, the slope of the land and its effect on effluence, the availability of streams for disposal of effluence. Not sure how that's going to go over.
That one over. I didn't mean to chuckle, but that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, let's just throw it right in there.
Well, the old days.
Yeah, that's kind of how it's done. And the applicable state and local health and water resources rules and regulations. So the proposed subdivision shall not discharge wastewater or stormwater to a water body without license from the Department of Environmental Protection, that's the performance standard. And the applicant's input is that the proposed development has been designed to minimize impact to the natural-conditioned sea-attached plants. So any discussion among the board here or questions?
No, I mean, I think, you know, I think that's where we're, you know, there's a little bit of the stormwater piece that we're analyzing, but I feel like that's, certainly in terms of wastewater, that's very clearly laid out.
Yeah, and, and we feel like, based on representations and what the back-and-forth that we have seen, this is being addressed and close to approval from our independent expert. I do have a question for the applicant, so from my understanding, you've got the, the road candid towards the north, and then you're catching, you were talking about French drains, you have to, that's French, Greek to me, but you've got, you're catching it up there, but then there's going to be smaller pipes running under the road and then going down the bank essentially to the stream eventually.
Yes, yes.
And is that a necessary feature?
Unfortunately, it is, Maine doesn't have suitable soils to infiltrate anything, so you have to always discharge, we have clay and rock here. So the best way to do that is we're going to run it through, a French drain is a stone channel that's a couple of feet wide, we size it based on the volume of water with a perforated pipe down at the bottom of that. So the water from the road will run into the underdrain system, filter down through the rock, and then there'll be a discharge point that has a four-to-six inch pipe, so it'll be a small outlet to control the flow. And then at the outlet, there'll be, we're, we're trying to use a Curlex and Excelsior blanket, which is like a fiber mesh material, so there'll be some Curlex out there to make sure there's no erosion at the outlet of that, rather than put more rock in that location. So it'll all be collected, discharged into that, specifically at that lower section there. In addition to just along the road, we're putting some of those same trenches up and around that lower bowl area, I like to call it, to kind of do the same thing, to pick it up and then to try to discharge it through.
And for small flows, you know, normal storms when it's relatively dry, I mean, that trench has to fill up to a point to get into the perforated pipe, and so there will be opportunities for that water to infiltrate and not always have to discharge through a pipe, but when you get a heavy storm, then, you know, it, water's going everywhere.
Right.
And so we need to be able to plan for those higher flows.
Right, and, and we're seeing more and more of those, unfortunately.
It's, it's, it's small pipe rather than a large culvert, is what you're.
Right, rather than collect it and send it all to one location, we're putting a bunch of crosspipes in so that in no one location do we have a large amount of flow, which reduces the potential for erosion.
So what, what we're going to see is, as you sort of said, multi-points of small pipes coming out with the, the fabric sort of catching that, but it is eventually, this is basically designed to run down the hill.
Hill.
Towards the stream.
It is, it is, yeah, there's, unfortunately, there is no better way to, there's no other way to discharge water. The site drains there now, it's a natural receiving area, it kind of runs over and through the road, takes the erosion with it, so the goal will be to try to contain it and improve the situation with our, with our measures that we're proposing.
Okay.
We're not rerouting any of the flow, the flow that, the natural flow that happens there today travels over the road and down into the brook.
Right, but we'll be, we'll be talking about disturbed soils and, and a new road construction, so it is, it is conceivable and likely that there'll be more sediment coming out of there than there is today.
Until it's stabilized, right.
But, but the advantage of doing it this way, though, is that that sediment's going to run back towards this, this stone trench.
Right.
Instead of just running off the road and down over the hill. So when it gets discharged, hopefully most of that sediment's going to get trapped in that, in that stone trench.
Can I just, the pollution standard, it's an odd one, to be honest, because we also have stormwater and erosion as well standards. But I, Andrew commented about the, I don't, you said Curlex or Excelsior fabric or Jup Mesh or whatever you're planning to use, can I ask the board to have them find a product that does not have plastic?
Yeah, they actually, they make one that's plastic-free.
Okay.
They, they've come up with that, and it's the same, same company, same everything, so they do have a, a plastic-free fabric, does the same thing.
We've run into it, the town has used it, we did a project over in Conventlo.
Find all kinds of shredded.
And it's, you know, everything is vegetated, but now we still have this plastic that's sticking up out of the ground and areas still, and it's forever, and it gets mowed, so it's going to be chopped up, which is not good. So if we can just make sure they use a biodegradable fabric or Excelsior blanket in part of the approval, that would be great.
Okay, and is that, is that something that needs to be replaced time to time, or is it?
No, that's, that's to get it to stabilize.
Yeah, the purpose of that is to get the vegetation to stabilize. So it is, it's like a woven, they have like thin plastic is how some of them are, and then they have fibers kind of tucked into it to make this like blanket.
Yeah.
But they do make a wood fiber, that's its string essentially.
Yeah.
But they hold it together, that gives the same support.
Yeah, we used to have a, we used to have a stormwater expert on our board, but we no longer do, and you can, you can see that I'm not he.
We're in favor of using that, I think, too.
Yeah, okay, so, but we could condition that, you'd be happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more from the board? On, on the pollution issue, we're going to be going over similar stuff when we get to, as we said, like the.
Stormwater.
Stormwater and everything else. Do you want to do all these, go through them and then run one motion, or do we want to?
Yeah, no, let's.
What do you want to find on each one?
All you're doing is seeing whether they've submitted.
Enough on that, right.
Yeah, we're not even making a motion, we're just.
Okay, got it.
We're just kind of doing a checklist, the, looking through to see, is there anything that we?
I just want to, you know, keep getting to the approval.
We're looking for the questions.
Right, we're looking at, gotcha, okay. So 235-82 is sufficient water, and we're looking at the state standard and then the performance standards. The proposed, the applicant says the proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision. And the performance standard is the private wells, when a proposed subdivision will not be served by public water, water supply shall be from individual wells or a private community water system, and we have a letter from local well driller.
And they've got indications that there are multiple well sites and pump houses on the, on the plan.
Yep, and then the fire protection, we've talked about that, they're going to have a cistern on-site for storage tanks for the, for the water there, and, and the chief chiming in on that. Anyone on that?
I have a quick comment that, you know, I was, if I was anxious about this review, it was not having a affirmative memo from the fire chief until today. And, you know, I know that that's beyond some of our control, but that was an important piece of information that didn't come in until the 11th hour, so.
Yeah.
That caused me some anxiety.
Which ones is? I'm sorry, we don't want to make John anxious.
That we hadn't heard back, we hadn't heard, we hadn't heard, we didn't get that till today, so.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll let them know not to keep us waiting next time.
At least, John.
Well, you know, I don't know if it, I don't know if it's the fire chief or.
Right, or the applicant, right, yeah.
Yeah.
To be honest, I think what we're going to try to do with staff is meet with developers or their engineers ahead of time before submittal, like maybe a month before submittal, so that we can nail this stuff down department-wide, you know, each department, rather than giving a department head two weeks or five days to respond to us is just not, not easy sometimes, so we'll, we'll deal with that in the future.
Okay. And then the design guidelines, we have the, public water is not available, the private wells shall meet the requirements, CMR, Chapter 232, and we have the licensed well driller, yep, and then the fire protection, so we really covered all of that.
And there is no municipal water supply.
Right, no municipal water supply, I just want to make sure I'm not running over anybody. If you have anything, just chime in, and Mr. Murray, you're still with us, so if you have any questions or concerns, please just speak up, I'm moving pretty quickly through this. Okay, so now we're into the erosion, which I think is a pretty significant portion, but again, we're just looking at the, the, whether, you know, they've, they've provided the information. So 235-8.4 erosion, the state standard, the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable sedimentation or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results. Then you've got the performance standards, the proposed subdivision shall prevent soil erosion from entering water bodies, wetlands and adjacent properties. The procedures outlined in the erosion and sedimentation control plans shall be implemented during the site preparation, construction and cleanup stages. The board may waive submission of the erosion and sedimentation control plan if the project will not involve grading, which changes drainage patterns, that will not be happening, obviously. The design guidelines, erosion control measures shall meet the standards of the Maine Erosion and Sediment Control Handbook of Construction, best management practices, disturbed land shall be exposed for the shortest time possible. Hay bales, silt fences and other techniques to capture sediment during construction shall be placed between areas of construction activity and stream channels, ditches and other elements of the drainage system. Topsoil and other materials excavated from or brought to the site of development should not be stockpiled on the site in a manner that allows sedimentation into any water course. Disturbed areas shall be mulched and seeded and planted as soon as, after construction is practicable. Areas in which there has been insufficient catch by the time the growing season ends shall be properly remulched if necessary. All temporary erosion control, control structures shall be removed from the site as soon as vegetative cover has become well-established. And the applicant's input on this one is that erosion and sediment control has been designed to comply with the town and state standards, see the attached plan set and attached erosion control narrative. I've looked over the narrative in the plans, is there anything from anybody on the board on this one?
I have a quick question, or, first of all, I applaud the applicant for putting a buffer along the, the property line where the, you're going to be doing a lot of clearing and putting in the septic system, and just along with erosion control, when, when is the buffer going in?
The planted buffer there, it'll be a combination of being placed after, so it's a field there now, it's in that, we're using that big field area, and all our proposed disturbance is actually within the field area, so we're not proposing to remove any additional trees in between there, but once the septic field is in and we can properly place that and get the drainage and everything taken clear, then the buffer will go back in. So unfortunately, it'll be after all that construction activity happens, but then they can extend it as far as they can, you know, in that area, once they, once everything's settled and in place.
Okay, and just, just follow up on that, what type of a buffer are you looking at? You're looking at evergreen or?
Evergreens, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, I mean, I think, you know, we've had multiple conversations about erosion and issues, I think we're, as we've said, we're pretty close to having that handled from Cumberland County.
I may also add to this, the DEP, the stormwater permit by rule that we submitted to them, that's, that's 90% of that application.
Right.
It's all about erosion and sediment control, and you have to provide a plan, that's all been included in here, but they did review and approve that, so a few things we're waiting for from the soil conservation is we had an invert on a pipe wrongly labeled, and we didn't give them a detail for a level spreader, we wanted to know the stone size and a level spreader, so those are the, the two details, two or three little details we're waiting for, for the, the stormwater to finalize his review, so it's very minor stuff.
Yep, okay, appreciate that. Yeah, so I think, you know, this, this is something that we, when we get to, for the actual approval.
Yeah, I mean, we've already talked about some of the caveats that we'll put in place on.
Yeah, but certainly it's been addressed. Anyone else? John, okay. 235-8.5 traffic, we have the.
Do you have traffic?
Attached DOT entrance permit.
Can I just go back to erosion, because that's where we were, right?
Yes, we were just on erosion.
I don't know if you want to more clearly clarify what you're asking for, for, I mean, because this is, they want to be able to have enough information so they can take it and go, move forward for their final, but are you looking for what we were talking about, you know, have it, whether it be Gartley and Dorsky.
The stage construction.
Stage construction and requiring that Gartley and Dorsky oversee the project during construction, and, I mean, I just, I think it's important that they know that now so they can work that into the, their final approval.
Got it.
Stormwater agreement on the plan?
Yeah, I mean, that'll be in there, but I'm, I'm more thinking about during construction, that's always, to me, that's, that's the real, that's the hard, the hard time, that always. always runs, we, we run afoul of, of things. So I want to make sure that you guys are good with it, and that the applicant knows what the expectation is.
Right, okay. So is everybody understanding what Jeremy's saying, and Mark also?
I think I do, but will that become a component of the motion?
That would become a, when we get to the point of approval, it would become a condition.
Right.
So what we want to do right now is discuss as a board whether we, whether we want to put that condition, we, whether we envision putting that condition on, in the future so that the applicant is aware of it, and therefore they can, they can address that.
They can incorporate it before we ask for it.
Yeah. And Mark, are you understanding what we're talking about here? I don't know if you're on mute.
I think he's muted.
He is, you can see.
I was on mute, yes, I am.
Okay. So, any discussion among the board? I certainly would support the stage development that's been discussed. I certainly would support a condition, having Gartley and Dorsky oversee the sediment and erosion control, and a special note, or special gift basket to the town to make sure they get out there as often as possible, to make sure that, that they also think that it meets the standards. All of those things, I, you know, really joking on the last one, but, but, but I, I would support those, and I would want to let the applicant know that those are things that we envision happening in the future.
I think Jeremy mentioned reinspection during that, during that time, reinspection of the control along the road.
A pre-inspection, right?
Well, we're, we're gonna do, we're gonna do, we do an inspection initial, but what I, I'm hoping, we always run into this problem when, when we know that there's a storm event coming, and the contract, the earthwork guys aren't really keeping an eye on what the weather's doing, they open something up. I mean, I, I'd like something that, I mean, I think Will and Andrew understand what I'm getting at.
Absolutely, we do it, we do it quite often, yeah.
Plan.
Yeah, yeah, permitting requirements, whenever you do upstream crossings or any of these type of projects, you have to do a very detailed construction sequencing, you know, it's a step one, you know, place erosion and sediment control barriers, step two, you know, check that, you know, so it, it goes through a, a number of sequences that we can easily put right on the plan for this, this section of road specifically in question.
Yep.
And ahead of storm events, they check it, after storm events, check it again to make sure if there was a failure that's fixed, so it doesn't, it doesn't repeat.
Because failures will happen occasionally, and you gotta get after them quick.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, you're pretty much on notice as far as what we're looking at?
We understand, well, if, if there's any questions, we'll reach out to Jeremy to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Make sure we're on the same page.
Okay, that's good. All right, so that, you all set there, Jeremy?
I am.
Thank you for that, that's, that's helpful. Get back to where we were. So then we were on to traffic. We have a DOT entrance permit. The general private road standard is the approval by, of a subdivision plan by the planning board shall not constitute or be evidence of any acceptance by the town of any road easement shown on such plan, and the board shall require the plan to contain appropriate notes to the effect. All subdivision roads shown on an approved subdivision shall be presumed to be private roads unless such roads are accepted as public roads by the town, which doesn't seem like a likely thing here.
No, and it's covered in there.
Yeah.
We have that specific note on our subdivision plan.
Yep.
And it's, the rest of this is pretty well covered in there.
Right, so I'm not gonna go ahead and read this entire, entire thing.
Maintenance and, I mean, it, it, it's a road that, you know, clearly would never, I mean, the town's not gonna take it on, so.
Right.
Even if they wanted to.
Yeah, yeah.
But their, their covenants cover that pretty well, so.
Okay, yeah, I don't think there's anything special that we're gonna go through here. We just look at the design guidelines, you got the entrance permits, the design standards, 18 feet, but then there's a waiver that we've already approved. Required road maintenance notes have been added to the plans per the applicant. Utilities will be installed per ordinance, and electrical and telecommunications underground. Street construction standards.
We've got those.
Provided set. Yep, okay. Anybody have anything on the streets and roads?
Yeah, I, I have a quick question. Section 4.2, you say it is covered in the covenant, the declaration rights, Article 4, on page eight of the, the clearance rights, it mentions that the, the declarant makes no assurance, no assurance that any such land be added, nor any, any portion of such land may be added, and shall have the right to construct and install utility systems and other infrastructure, including but not limited to roads and other easements. And I guess this is, does this, is this specific to the road that's being constructed, or does this state that after completion, so, because section 4.2 says completion and modification of improvements?
Right.
So is that after the fact of this being completed, you know, my, my question is, is?
I think that gives them the right to.
It's intended to be a reservation of future development rights.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's future.
And it's also that, you know, this is slightly different than a standard subdivision where the, the residents don't own the land, so the condominium association owns the road and, and all of that, so it's a slightly different structure than some standard subdivisions, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, good questions. Design guidelines, where was I, already passed that?
Sewage.
Moving on to sewage disposal. 235-8.6 sewage disposal. The state standard is proposed subdivision will provide for adequate sewage waste disposal, will not cause an unreasonable burden on municipal services, not applicable there, but the adequate sewage disposal. We have a private system with an attached letter from the licensed soil evaluator and supporting test logs. The record, the summary is that the site contains adequate soils to support multiple subservice wastewater disposal systems such as are envisioned for this project. Anyone on the soil and sewage issue?
No, I think it's a perfect use of the field.
Grass is always greener over the septic tank.
Hopefully not.
Supposed to be over the leach field, that's what it really should say. Don't ask me how I know about that.
I, I have a quick comment that the, the septic system in the drain field, unless I've missed something, is not in a specific tract, it's just on a portion of the property.
The, the septic field?
The septic field in the, the whole septic system.
We've shown it, we've shown the location of it.
Yes.
I'm at the top of the hill there, yeah. We conducted test pitting to make sure there was suitable soil for that. And we're proposing to utilize a large field to serve up to 20 bedrooms.
And, and I recognize that. My, my question, or maybe it's a comment, is, I'm used to seeing these sorts of facilities in a specific tract that's sort of identified.
Oh, on a separate parcel.
Well, it, it, yeah, it's, it's identified, you know, there'd be a dashed line around it, and this is the, the system. And it's just an obso, I'm not suggesting you do it, just commenting that, in my experience, these sorts of facilities have been located in a tract. And I don't know what the legal or practical benefit is of that, but.
You mean a delineation of the actual pipes, et cetera, or just?
Well, just, in, in this particular case, you know, it, it would be a dashed line drawn around that facility.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you're thinking of like having an easement for a common system.
Yeah.
But in this case, because it's a condominium, all the land is, is owned in common.
Right.
By the association, so there's no need for an additional designation of the area.
I think, I think what you're saying is like, like we have a couple subdivisions that have a fire pond, and the, the whole subdivision owns that fire pond, and.
Yeah.
Even septic systems that have a shared, and they're on somebody else's lot, and they have rights to.
But that's, I mean, we have, we have the location, if we're, we're there proposing it, so.
Right, okay. So we're feeling pretty good about the septic and the waste sewage disposal. Solid waste disposal.
We have a letter.
Yep. We have a letter from Big Coast Solid Waste Facility. We have yet to receive a response confirming our statement. Oh, they've reached out, we don't have anything yet.
No, we, we do, that, that's an old.
I was gonna say, we have a letter.
We wrote that before we had it, yeah.
We, we do have a letter now, so.
I, I think ironically, we attached it to this. It is, it's attached to it.
We have had a few versions of this document, so.
All right, aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. This is 235-8.8. The proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, or the municipality, rare and irreplaceable natural areas, or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shoreline. The applicant's information on this one is that it's hidden from public view, and the goal of the developer is to maintain natural, natural aesthetics. Any discussion on the natural values, cultural and aesthetic?
As we've discussed, their goal is to remove as little as possible from the, you know, and any development is gonna have some impact.
Yeah, I think we should probably, at this point, just look it over, because this goes on. I just read the first state standard. If it's designated as an open space development in conformance with the provisions of the zoning ordinance, the plan shall provide for the conservation of the highest valued resources on the site. All subdivisions shall conform to the following. Preservation of natural beauty and aesthetics, the plan shall, by notes on the final plan, indeed restrictions, limit the clearing of trees to those areas designated on the plan, except as necessary for good forestry practices. Retention of open spaces and natural, historic, and archaeological features. If any portion of the subdivision located within an area designated as critical nature by the comprehensive plan, the subdivision plan shall indicate appropriate measures for the preservation of, and the values that qualify the site for such designation. I don't think that's applicable under the comp plan, right, Jeremy? There's no designation here.
No.
Excuse me. If any portion of the subdivision is designated site of historic, prehistoric or archaeological importance, and I don't think that's impacted either, the goal of proposed, this is the applicant's response here, the goal of proposed development minimize impact to the existing natural conditions. A note has been adding to, added to the plan indicating tree removal will be limited to developed areas identified on the plan, except as necessary for good forestry practices, and no historic or prehistoric sites known to exist. Anybody on this section?
No, what I was just gonna say is, I mean, you have some, there's gonna be some impact.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's a development, but all the efforts are to work with the existing site.
Yep. Anybody, Mr. Murray, anything?
No, I'll get to me.
Okay, John?
I'm good.
Okay, to you. Okay. Going on to protection of significant wildlife habitat, if any portion proposed subdivision lies within areas identified and mapped by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, the developer shall demonstrate that there shall be minimal impacts on the habitat and species it supports. The plan shall provide for protection of the identified resource in a manner applicable to the main Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, or in accordance with the recommendations of a wildlife biologist, with the demonstrated experience in the wildlife resource being impacted and approved by the board. In the latter situation, the report prepared by the wildlife biologist, biologist shall assess the potential impact of the subdivision on the significant habitat and adjacent areas that are important to the maintenance of the affected species, and shall describe appropriate mitigation measures to ensure the subdivision will have minimal impacts on the habitat and the species it supports. And these areas include habitat for species appearing on official state or federal list of endangered or threatened species. I don't think we have anything here for that.
No.
High and moderate value waterfowl habitats, including nesting and feeding areas, and I don't think we have that. Higher moderate value deer wintering areas, and here we have had discussion on this. The IFMW, this is the applicant's response, conducted a site visit, except, excuse me, on January 18th to evaluate the mapped deer wintering area, and there's an attached letter with their recommendations.
What should go on to say is that we've, we've complied with all their recommendations and added theirs, the recommendations to the plans.
Yep.
Right, we have the, areas all are identified and, and designated to be preserved for the deer.
Mm-hmm.
I have a comment on this section perhaps, and, and the, the letter from Keeley refers to Phase Two that he's looked at as well. And you had mentioned during our site visit, you kind of pointed up the hill, and so we know that there's a Phase Two out there. And perhaps a question for, for Jeremy, just to get some comfort level on it, that if there's a Phase Two, that it'll come in for its own review and be subject to similar comprehensive review as to what the applicants have enjoyed for Phase One.
Yeah, if I, if I can comment on that, the, the purpose of that was to make sure he understood potential future development when he was making his recommendations, so we didn't kind of pick away at pieces of it. So we showed him potential area that we were gonna develop, just so he understood and could do a comprehensive recommendation.
And I think that, that's a value to the planning commission as well, and, you know, but I take comfort in the new review process that that would be subjected to as well.
Yeah, any, any amendment or change to this plan, or expansion of this plan, goes through the same process.
Right.
So, yeah, and you, you review the same criteria again.
It's one unit or five?
Yep, true.
You have something?
Not on the standard, I'm just looking at the time, and we'll get through this, but I know that we do have some folks in the audience who may be waiting in expectation of a hearing, and I'm wondering if we're gonna get to the hearing tonight.
Yes.
Having been in their position, if we get to, if it gets to nine o'clock and we don't have a hearing, it's kind of annoying, unless they want to stay for the whole time.
Right, yeah, that's, I would say we're very likely not going to get to the approvals stage of this tonight.
We could, I just, I just wanted to.
You could take comments, and they wouldn't be part of the public hearing record unless they came back, but that might be sufficient to alert the applicants of their concern.
Uh-huh.
With that as a comment here, you could, if you take.
Okay, is that, that's, that's an appropriate use of the, of the time now. I think that's a good idea, because I do want to allow people to speak, and since we're on the issue of habitat especially, I have a feeling that's largely what we're looking to speak on, if I'm not mistaken, so.
That's my.
Yeah, so, gentlemen, if you'd like to come up and have, have a word, we're just gonna make clear that this is not a part of the official record.
Okay.
This is an opportunity to comment, and the applicant is hearing it, but it's not part of the official record. But there will be a hearing down the road, that you're still invited to come and provide those comments again.
Okay.
But it is being heard by the board and by, by the applicant.
Sounds good, thank you.
That's just an effort to get you out of here, instead of keeping you, as Crystal said, till nine o'clock, and then say sorry next time.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, it was good thinking.
Bruce Tolman, 520 Belfast Road. Again, like I said previously, my folks and family have owned this property since 1953, and we have actually maintained Spring Brook Trail from Route One all the way to where the brook crosses over the trail, which is just about a mile. And I under.
Sort of hugs the property line at once?
It, it does, and then there's a section there that we actually own.
Right.
Trail, which is over 800 feet. And I think, Ed, you had said something, I wasn't here for that January meeting, but you said something, you had made some arrangements with the state park for a fee.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. My big concern is, is you're gonna have these people coming from these rentals, or if they own them, they're gonna be coming up Spring Brook Trail, they're not gonna know, you cannot tell the difference between Spring Brook Trail and our property. It's all one. And, you know, we, we hunt, and we do a lot of target practicing, we do a lot of skeet shooting, and we're just not gonna, it's gonna be kind of hard for us, because we're not gonna know who's on our property, because they may not know. They're not gonna know where the line is, and I certainly don't want to post every 50 feet on my property. And then if they follow the trail up to go into the pack, like I say, there's. And then if they follow the trail up to go into the park, like I say, there's over eight hundred feet. That's actually our property. So that's a big concern for us. I mean, right now, we have practically zero people go up through there. And it's just gonna be a big change for us in more ways than one. During hunting season, are these people gonna wear orange? They're gonna have dogs, they're gonna have them off-leash, because I trap up there. It's just a whole gamut of issues that we would be facing as abutting property owners. And that's one of my big concerns right there, so.
Do you have any recommendations? You just wanna sort of raise the concern and then?
You know, I don't know what you can do. People, you know, you could put signs up, but you know how that is. People are gonna do what they're gonna do, and we've got a nice seven acre field up there, and they're gonna see that right off the trail, and they're gonna wanna check it out, you know? And it's just gonna be tough. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the big thing. I mean, we're, that's why we're quite concerned with this whole project, you know? You know, you've made a big investment, and you want a return, I understand that, but it puts a lot on us, because it's gonna involve people wandering onto our own property, you know? So, but that's, I mean, I could be here for an hour talking, but that's the major concern for us, so.
Yep.
But.
Yep.
Anyway. All right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Bruce? Just a question. There's your, there's your property, right? Right there.
Up at the top.
Yeah. I'm just trying to get everyone to kind of orient themselves here, right?
Basically, that blue line, yeah.
It's this Kirby Blue Line.
Yeah.
All about the top there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you can see that little.
But it doesn't show it all the way. Our property continues way beyond there.
Okay.
And it goes up, it's bordered on the other side by the state park. And this one doesn't show it, but it goes all the way up. See?
Continues from there.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah.
So the trail is the one on the.
That little dotted red line that crosses over, it keeps going.
Right. Yeah.
The dotted red line.
The dash, right.
Dashed.
That's the Springbrook Trail.
Dashed, dotted.
Is there any signage or anything coming from the park towards the trail?
It's been discontinued.
The.
Coming down from the park on Springbrook Trail, they got a big sign saying it's discontinued, because, well, it's kind of rough going, and plus, then it runs onto our property.
Yep.
And so, within the last probably four years, I had to post it, because we got people coming down through there, and.
Coming out of the park.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's what I'm getting at, is sort of as a solution, since you probably have the same issue with people coming from the park, and they've got a big sign there, et cetera, saying this is really not a trail to be used. I mean, this is not a public access trail anymore, is it, or is it?
Well, the state park has discontinued it. I mean, it's been discontinued for quite a while, and we keep it cleared mainly for three reasons. One, for snowmobiling, for fire. If you needed to, you could get a Jeep-type vehicle or a UTV up there.
Yeah.
With people and equipment, and, you know, for us, for hunting and gathering, getting our firewood.
Yep.
That's the main reason we've kept it open all these years.
You keep it open as a woods road.
Right, exactly, so.
In discussing with the state park, what exactly are you talking about in terms of trails, or?
Yes, we're talking with them about allowing our residents to access the park trail network through Springbrook Trail.
That would be through the neighbor's property?
There's a section that goes through his property, and Bruce and I have discussed this, and he's made it clear that he's not welcome to that, so we would find another way.
So that's what I was gonna ask. So, I mean, here's Bruce's line, right? This is the existing trail, right?
Yeah.
But this is where the, you know, the hot tub and sauna is.
Mm-hmm.
At the end of the road, right? This is the walking path, and we went down here, right? We crossed this, we crossed the brook here on our site visit.
Walked a little bit up the way.
I think to about here.
Yep.
Right? But this road continues back up to Bruce's, right? To this corner, and then shoots back this way, right?
You can go, you can go left or right.
You can go left or right.
Yep.
Left to the park.
So, left to the park. So, it's not that the applicant's property doesn't abut the park. They abut the park.
Yeah.
But Bruce's property is not showing.
That's like up here.
The other side of that tennis court-sized piece is Bruce's property. It goes up to the left.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, I was just trying to, so this is state park land?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that trail, at some point further off the map there, crosses in and out of his property.
The trail on the state park land crosses onto his.
Again, further up.
Yeah, further up, yeah.
Okay, that's helpful. Just trying to.
It just doesn't show it on this map.
On Max's map, it shows it. That map right there shows it.
Crosses from our property into the state park.
Ninety-one.
So I would just say that we.
There's his property right here.
Okay.
And there's the corner, and that trail comes up, and it crosses over like this.
Yeah.
Into that property.
So if.
Yeah, so here's the property, here's the Toman property. The trail comes up, kind of connects across, and goes back into this, and then up into the state park. But this is all state park land.
So in theory, you guys can create a new trail.
Right.
Going far away from Bruce's.
That's what we would have to do.
Toward the park land, and whether or not the state wants to add new trails down there, that's what they could do, right?
Yeah, we have no intention to make it a public trail.
Right. No, I get that.
The only thing is, on the other end, what's gonna stop people from the state park coming down into your place? That's, you're creating a problem both ways.
There's nothing to stop them today.
We're creating that problem. I think that this problem just exists.
So.
Well, it's like I say, you're inviting people onto my property.
You had discussed, or mentioned that you were gonna have part of the ownership be, include a membership in the park, state park?
Include the park access fee.
Park pass as part of it?
So. I've heard for a long time, since I came to Camden, that the park has struggled with people accessing the park.
In and out.
In and out without paying.
Yeah, it happens all the way up.
It happens all the way up, so I think that's where I think you guys are trying to at least address that issue with the property owners.
Right.
So I think the one, the one thing that if you invite people onto your land, or to pass through it, you're liable for anything that happens on your land. Is that right? So you bear the legal responsibility. I mean, if people trespass, if people head down the trails, like you say, you can't stop them now. That's one thing. If somebody gets injured, then they're trespassing. But if you're actually inviting them on a trail, does that then have a legal bearing?
I mean, if you have a sign that says, "Trail open to the public."
Correct.
That's a different thing than.
We don't intend to do that.
Nobody's doing that.
Not even to the public, but if you have, you know, if you open it up to.
I can tell you, every couple of weeks, I find somebody in my driveway who's heading up that trail.
Oh, yeah.
So, there is a.
Because they've done it for years.
They've done it for years, yeah.
You know, I work with Jerry Isom, and I wound up putting no trespassing signs, because it's like, what more do you need? It's not your property, don't go on it. They figured, I've been doing it for years. Well, that doesn't make it right.
Are they fishing for brook trout, or are they accessing the state park?
No, one of them was a mushroom hunter, and he's just collecting mushrooms, but, you know, if it says no trespass.
Fixley the guy's name?
What's that?
It's still Fixley the guy's name.
Oh, boy.
Remember, you're on the record here.
It's a record.
Oh, boy.
That's very helpful, Bruce, to bring this up. I think it's very helpful.
Yeah, and it's important, and, you know, we're talking about safety, and we're talking about individual, you know, property rights and things like that, and so. Yep, and so that's something that's going to have to be addressed, and it sounds like, you know, Ed is aware of it. You know, it's a, I don't know if there's any trails, you know, I don't know this area of Camden Hill State Park, but I don't know if there are any trails that abut your land that you can connect to, and maybe we'll get some more information that are south of that trail. But that might be something you're looking into, because.
It's about a mile from the multi-use trail between our property.
Closest.
Yeah.
That finger that came down was the most significant, you know, and that used to be the old extension through the whole property and into everything.
What I can say is, you know, Bruce and I have talked, and I understand his concerns. And there are some steps that we can take with signage, with, we can make all of our residents aware of the limitations of deer hunting season. It's never safe to walk in the woods without being properly prepared in deer hunting season or any hunting season. So these things, we'll make sure that we let people know. We'll ask them not to trespass on his property. So we'll do what steps we can. If you're welcome to signage, we can put some signage up saying this is the end of the state park trail, and you need to find another way. And if the state's amenable to it, we'll put a circumvent route around his property.
Does that end up going into the condo docks?
This is not our property. It's the state's property, really, so I don't think it enters into our condo docks.
But I mean, the limitations.
The trail itself, you think, or are you talking about just beyond it, the state park?
Into the state park.
When it gets beyond the end of our property, it's the state's property.
But I think Lucio was asking about.
Limitations that.
Is there something that you could put in your covenants or the bylaws that highlight the.
Don't trespass.
Property, yeah. Well, and an awareness of.
We say a lot of things in those covenants that are pretty rude, but, yeah.
For future ownership, if the property turns over, or?
Here's, I mean, you know, it comes down to, in this situation, you know, obviously, you've had some discussions, which is great. The communication's happening. You don't wanna, you don't wanna create a bigger problem with a neighbor, and you've got a good gentleman here who's, you know, got a concern about safety and just the way he uses his land, the way he's always used it, and we want to be respectful and honor those rights. So I don't know what the solution is, but it's good to have that information, so that we can take that to heart, and maybe we can work out something. Pretty much basically, what it sounds like to me is the applicant is on notice that, you know, the portion of the trail that crosses the applicant, or Bruce's property, is not, is not open and not safe. And so there's gonna be, anything that's worked around from that is between, you know, is what the applicant can accomplish on their own land with the state, or in further discussions with Bruce. And, you know, if there's a workaround for that with him, then you can address that, but I don't think it's gonna happen from the planning board perspective, but it's really good to know.
Well, it's one of those things, I always try and put myself in someone else's shoes, and it's like, I can't imagine anyone saying, oh, yeah, sure, that's fine. It's like, you know, this is something completely new. We've never had this problem. I mean, we, you know, if things go good, you could have up to thirty, right? Thirty units?
Things went well?
So, that's a lot of traffic. And it's like, I don't think anyone could truthfully say, hey, I'd be up to that. Yeah, sure, walk on my property or whatever. It's like, it's a big change. That's what I'm trying to get across.
Do you run into that problem now?
Not anymore. We did for a while, but I think in conjunction with the state putting a discontinued trail, and then the few rogue people that we found coming down through, we put up signs and haven't really had much. It's kind of out of the way.
Yeah.
It really is, and there's no parking on Route One.
Right.
So you can't, you know, and that's kind of why they discontinued it, I think, way back when, so.
And what trail is that that it discontinues? Is it one of the?
Springbrook Trail.
Called that in the park as well?
Yeah, they have a sign right at the, right at the head of the trail there, yeah, so.
Okay. Well, thanks again, yeah.
Well, appreciate it.
If there's anything that comes up, or you hear about, and you want to come back, you're welcome back.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Yeah.
Very helpful.
Hi, I'm still Chris Nolan, and I'm one of those, when he said there's like zero people, I'm the like zero who have access to his land. But it's not, and these are things that, you know, Bruce and I have worked out, you know, since, I probably lived there since nineteen ninety-seven. And I also was an employee of the state park in the eighties as well. There's actually, there's actually two former state park trails in the area. Again, former. One is Springbrook, which you mentioned, that goes up to the multi-use trail. And about equidistant from where that intersects, where Springbrook intersects the multi-use trail, Claybrook Trail also intersects the multi-use trail. Claybrook Trail heads to Route One as well from the multi-use trail. And that one goes on the other side of Bruce's property, on the north side, and comes down to Route One.
Bruce is surrounded by former state park trails.
In fact, there's a, there is a sign, I think by the field that used to be there, indicating either Springbrook or Claybrook, and it would look like you would just walk through Bruce's, what is it? I don't know how many acres that is up there, but thirty acre field?
Uh, no, no.
Seven?
Yeah, seven, seven and a half.
Seven acre field up, and then on the other side of that, you go through the woods a bit, and you intersect with the Claybrook Trail. And Claybrook Trail actually goes along the property edge of his, which is a stone wall, all the way down to Route One. I've recently talked with the state park manager, who goes by the name of Sunshine. She used to be out on Warren Island, but now she's over there at Park Ranger's House. And of course, you know, Claybrook Road is where I live, so I'm kind of interested in Claybrook Trail, too. And I was taking a look at that, seeing, okay, could we, in my conversation with Sunshine, could we reinvigorate Claybrook Trail, and could we also then see what's going on with Springbrook? And I hope it would be good if she was at, the next time, this is discussed, speaking about the trail networks, to find out about the research that she's been doing on Springbrook and Claybrook. And one of the reasons why, that she mentioned to me, that Springbrook and Claybrook were discontinued was because of property issues that they were having down towards Route One. And also, the people would complain about not having parking there, and there isn't, there's no parking. So she had some concerns about what's going on as well with Springbrook Trail. And yes, I know the sign up at the multi-use trail says discontinued, and it's Springbrook and just the beginning, the emanation of Claybrook is noted on the state park maps at the multi-use trail level. But the other thing is, yes, I'm here supporting Bruce, yes, I've enjoyed the use of his property, but also to think about what have I done to be able to continue to use his property that other people would have to really consider? It's not just deer season, and it's not just the rifle part of deer season that I have to be courteous of. Yes, I walk my dogs there. They're labs. They're good, they're good dogs. They have fun, and they can go off-leash as long as I know he's not trapping. I stick to the trail so that the dogs don't vary much off the trail. It might go a few feet into the woods, but, you know, that's it. Within, they stay on the trail. I have to stay out weeks ahead of deer season and turkey season, so that I don't impact what's going on with that, so I don't negatively impact.
Like the sand and everything else?
My privilege to be able to use that. And so those are considerations that he's worked out with me over time. My kids have used it, you know, I've ridden my motorcycle up in there. It's allowed, because I did it with Bruce's permission.
Yeah.
And also, I don't go up there with a motorcycle when it's muddy, you know? It's about being considerate. And so, in seeing the development, yes, I understand people can buy the land and do what they could and should within reasonableness with the land. And sure, if I had the money, I would have bought it too, but I don't. It's a beautiful piece, but it just has to be done with consideration. Whatever is done is with consideration of how that's going to affect others. And there is avenue for a trail that goes along with Springbrook. It's not for the meek, but if you cross the property and you go up the really steep embankment, across the little river inlet, the deer trail is so good there and so used, it's a self-evident trail that ultimately links into the top end of Springbrook off of his property. So, yeah, that's viable. It's currently across the state park.
Yeah.
But you can follow it anytime. And that would avoid Bruce's property, but there is, you know, there is the safety issue and concern that it would just have to be understood it's not a carte blanche thing and who that is. But those are the things that I do, to maintain, you know, my access, and even though I'm not directly abutting, I mean, it's.
Yep.
Pretty damn close, so. Anyway, those are my thoughts in support of Bruce and the project, and thank you.
Chris.
I was just curious about, you know, we do have to likely schedule a public hearing on the preliminary stuff, so.
Yeah.
And you guys found the application complete. I just want to make sure we're giving enough information to the applicant. I just wanna make sure we're giving enough information to the applicant-
Like what parts we need to look forward to? Well, just sort of table that discussion on the trails. Are you talking about the trails specifically now?
No, I'm not talking about trails. I'm, I think you understand their concern.
Yes, yeah. The only thing I would like, I mean, you said Sunshine is doing some work, Chris, on, on the, on the trails.
Some research.
Yeah, some research. And, and, and is that research about whether or not the, the public access should continue? Or is it about like the, because I know, I, I spent some time in Barnard, Vermont, I mentioned this before, and they, someone went and did a bunch of research on old right-of-ways and, and roads, and everybody in the town flew out the handle because all these old roads went across their properties and everybody's going all over the place. And this is a bunch of people who like to have their own privacy and their own, you know, autonomy and their own land, so similar issue. Is she looking into that particular part of it, or?
Based on the intent of our discussion, I believe it was general interest. She's fairly new to being the, the Park Manager there. She's heard about things, and she had all the ledgers there in the wall from the forties and such of when there were more active discussions with those to see, is this viable, is it not viable? She, at this point, is just really educating herself. Notwithstanding, you know, this project, it was just because, you know, she's new-
Yeah.
And wants to look at it and see what is, is viable and what is not. But in that discussion is when she was saying that, yeah, I heard that, you know, these things went out because of the complaints. And, and it wasn't, Springbrook wasn't fully understood what State Park and, and what wasn't. So that's, that's why I, I asked her to, to come for the last meeting, and she wasn't available, but I'll certainly make mention, just because, I mean, she's such a huge butter to this. And, yeah, there was the concern about, you know, price of access is another reason why she was not super motivated about, "Oh, let, go for it, Chris, and get Claybrook going again," because of also the loss of the revenue. I mean, I'm fortunate as a-
Yeah, no.
As a disabled veteran that I can get access, but, and have the annual, the annual pass, but not everyone does.
Yeah.
So she doesn't lose revenue directly from me for accessing through Bruce or Claybrook or whatever, but that is a concern.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Jeremy, you wanted to move on to-
Well, I just wanted to, I mean, we've scheduled, you know, we just need to continue the public hearing, I think, is what we need to do because the piece of this. I think what you need to do, I mean, I hope we can do it in the next twenty minutes or so, is kinda go through the rest of these approval standards.
Yes.
Am I, twenty minutes not work? I mean, you know, we just went over the fish and wildlife stuff, right? Which gets us to financial capacity, technical capacity, surface waters, outstanding rivers, groundwater, floodplain, freshwater, river streams, brooks, stormwater, and that's pretty much it. Right. So, we can roll through some of this and then maybe continue it to a date certain so that we don't have to re-advertise it and do all that. We'll obviously do public notice like we do on our website and post it in town, but we don't have to do the, the notice in the paper. I just want the applicant, if there's anything that's jumping out at you guys, you know, and I hope you looked at this a little bit ahead of time, if there's anything that is jumping out at you from these standards, so they can address them. Okay. I'm, I'm, I embrace that plan. So, we really have covered, I think, you know, the wildlife habitat, financial and technical capacity.
Yep.
Yeah. We go back to twenty, right, or so? Andrew, twenty or so to get back to your-
Yes, twenty-six.
Twenty-six? All right. Yeah, so right now we're on two page, well, I don't have a page number, but two thirty-five, eight point nine. Financial and technical capacity of the applicant. And we have, the applicant has adequate financial resources. Site acquisition, design costs, been funded by cash equity investments by Nord Haven. And that's a group of private investors, significant capital committed. Construction costs be funded through a combination of equity drawn under the capital commitments made by the investor group and a construction loan from a local regional lender.
Can I just comment on that really quick, maybe to move you along? I mean, I appreciate all that, but we don't have anything other than that, right?
Right. I don't have anything, yeah.
That's what I was saying, we don't have, we, we just have the good word of-
Right, so maybe the applicant can address that in a better way, somehow provide some sort of evidence that you've got the funds to do this, and maybe Gartley Dorsey can come up with an estimated cost and all that so that we can actually get something. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that was the one I was gonna ask about, because- The performance guarantee stuff anyways for the final, right?
True.
That, I could stand to be educated a little bit on the process in this regard, that we'll approve a preliminary plan and they'll come back at some point with a final subdivision plan. And in that intervening period of time, is there a requirement for them to have construction estimates and any sort of a bonding before they're actually out working on the site? Or if they're actually at a position where they're selling home sites?
Yes, so there's this section, and then there's a section about performance guarantees that we would address that in. And I think they're hearing this conversation, so they'll address that in some fashion. So what happens is you're, eventually, and we're not gonna do it tonight, because we're just not going to, we're gonna continue this meeting, because this is a public hearing technically, we'll continue it. And at that, at that point, we'll go through, you'll, at the end of that hearing, you'll grant preliminary plan approval. And then they'll take it away and then get final stuff done, final plans done, final documents, legal documents, all that stuff for, to come back. At that point, hopefully, it should be, you know, how I see it, kind of a dumb thing, if you're all comfortable once the preliminary's done, but I think you just keep going, if that makes sense.
Well, there'll come a time when the property owner will sign a plat perhaps, and a town representative signs a plat.
You guys all sign the subdivision plat that gets recorded in the registry of deeds with all the deed restricts, all the covenants are in there, the deed restrictions that get placed in.
And, and prior to us affixing our signatures on that plat, is there a financial guarantee, a performance bond, if you will?
There is, I was reading about it. I haven't done one recently, so-
There is a performance.
Performance.
Okay.
Yeah.
It applies usually when there are public-
Matching.
Public improvements.
Public improvements, utilities, and the town could get stuck.
Okay.
This is a whole private interest, but I'm not sure-
Yeah, that was, I was gonna say, that was how I read, that I don't think in this case there's a requirement for it because the town's not on the hook for anything.
I'm a little surprised that, and-
That's, I mean, that's how I read it.
Did you read Article Ten, the performance guarantee section?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure that that-
I, I'll work with the town, town attorney in the next couple of days to get some kind of, that in this little bit. But what we don't want to happen is the developer to get down a road and then all of a sudden he bails or something happens, the, the development is half started-
A road is half-built and road and running all of them, right?
The road running to the river. I mean, we need to have some sort of protection that, that they can finish the project in some fashion. Or if they can't finish it, we can at least come in and stabilize the work and then be done, right? I mean, I think that's your concern. Does that make sense?
I don't anticipate it, you guys. Medical discussion.
Right. But I guess I just, the way I was, and I just glanced at it, but the way I read it is, you know, you could have the same thing with a, a individual property owner could start excavating for a house and run out of money and leave a washout situation too, so it's, I mean, it's-
That, that person couldn't sell ten home sites.
Correct. And that project doesn't have a fin, and those projects don't have financial or technical requirements either. Right, as part of the approval, we do.
Right, that's, yeah, right, that's good.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, John, good, good question, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, we're looking for more on the financial stuff rather than just your good word. And the technical, we've got Gartley and Dorsey and survey, engineering surveying and Maple Street Design Studios to assist them with the technical requirements of this project. Does that meet people's-
And Maple Street is the landscape architect.
Architects, yeah.
So you also have the, the landscape?
We do.
The way, Maple Street is the-
Architect for the buildings.
Yeah, Joe Rusill, the-
Yeah, he's over here.
But that's not the, that's not the, that's not the-
He's unfortunately out of the spotlight, right?
I know, he's hot, he even took behind the TV. That's not the company that's actually constructing the units for the prefab piece, okay.
Surface waters, outstanding river segments?
Yep.
And I would say that we are not in a watershed of a pond or a lake or within two hundred and fifty feet of any wetland, great pond or river. We are in the shoreline zone, but that's not what this is asking. Outstanding river segments.
Right.
We do have wetlands, though. There's wetlands designated on the, on the-
Yes, there's a few small wetlands on the front of the parcel.
That's another, that's a few standards down.
That's different, yeah, that's different than-
Few standards down.
Because we have freshwater wetlands as far down.
All right.
This is just rivers.
Yep. Groundwater. Yet not adversely affect on the groundwater. Stormwater management is really the key there.
Well, I think the groundwater would be curious about if the, if, you know, you're sucking enough, so much water out that you're impacting groundwater quality or quantity.
Wells and, and septic. You know, are they gonna start, are the neighbors' wells gonna dry out because of, I think that we'll have that from the-
Are they gonna buffer?
Yeah.
Between the neighbors in there.
Get a lot of water consumed.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be an issue, right, right?
They're gonna start bottling it.
Start a bottling-
That's how rumors start, careful.
Floodplains identified on the plans. The floodplain areas are located close proximity to Springbrook, no surprise there. No structures posed within that area.
Now you've got your wetlands.
Yeah, now we're to the wetlands. How much of the wetlands are impacted again?
I lost the number in my head, but it's about fifteen hundred square feet. We've got them identified on our-
You've also got some up by the, and that's by the, is it by the sauna that they're impacted?
No, it's only along the front of the property.
In here, yeah.
It's just that little corner.
Care to state waiver? It does not, wetland-
It's under-
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's under forty-three hundred square foot threshold. And the real ones are all- Oh, it's, it's two thousand and sixty-six square feet is what we're proposing.
Okay. And a wetland permit would be required if you're doing over forty-three hundred square feet. Okay.
And the vast majority of the wetlands are all in the protected areas, so.
Okay.
Springbrook.
And then the next one is river stream or brook.
Yep.
Is there a stream on this property? No one's mentioned that.
Just a brook.
Oh, it's a brook, okay.
Gotta get that.
Not a creek.
So we're located and identified.
It's identified.
It, it has been identified and it rushes and then it pools, right? It dries up and it still pools. I think we've been over this quite a bit, obviously, and the, the primary concern that we hear is just the sediment.
Yeah.
The erosion control, and we've been over that ad nauseam, so with that, you know, I think we've put the applicant on notice about importance of that. You know, I, I, I invite a very thorough plan for the erosion control, and, you know, we've seen a pretty good one already. But adding in those components, we've already identified about, you know, Gartley and Dorsey overseeing, you know, that kind of thing. I think, I think the board will be satisfied at that point. Anybody have anything further on that?
And I just appreciate the idea that the proposal includes the open space requirements are focused on the stream.
Lucio, anything further on the stream right now? There was a suggestion, I think it was Allison who mentioned, that the spring is different than the winter when we were there. Any appetite on the board for a, a site visit in the spring? Is it going to change any minds or cause any concerns? You know, we know the road is soft, we know that, that, that the bank is soft right now, everywhere in Maine is soft. But I don't know what the, what the board's perspective on that is.
Chair, I don't, I don't need to go back out and look for mushrooms.
In actual fact, you know, when we were there, the stream, the brook was running pretty good too, so we saw it in full flow and-
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I think we'd only be trying to imagine what would be happening. We've, we've seen that, so I don't think we need to go back.
No, I, I guess only again regarding construction, what time of year the construction of this particular section of road would be happening? Is there any concern about it happening in the soft period, so to speak, versus another time of year? I don't know if, if that's-
We don't really have a, I mean, we, what we can, what we've asked for is sort of controls all of that and, I mean, not, no one, no one wants to go out there in March when everything's gonna get stuck and-
Right, I mean, they're not gonna have, March is over, so they're not gonna have approval in March.
Yeah, well, this year-
But they are, but they are, I mean, I expected you, you hope to have this done by the end of the year, right? Especially the road construction. The, is there, is there a sense in which, you know, if everything goes according to plan on the approval side, is there a way to put this part of the road towards the drier season?
I mean, it, it's certainly always a balancing act when you're trying to stage construction. The, the more important component of this is that it is done early rather than later so that the vegetation can reestablish before winter. That's the critical path here, you know, so we're confident the soils can be stabilized, you can work on them when they're soft. The contractor's not gonna be digging through there when you're sinking in a flat mud, you know? So once the soils dry out, that's when you wanna target it so you can get in, because we have like a very short growing season and the earlier we get that in place, everything's stabilized.
Logically, the key sections that we're talking about are gonna be later in the road work anyway, because you've gotta put the road in to get there.
You have to get to first. Exactly.
But you don't start at the end and work your way through it?
I mean, that would really cause some, you're just gonna drive the bulldozer all the way through and then, yeah.
So, okay, yeah, I think we're really, again, focused on the erosion there and that's been, been hammered. So, with that, with that, I'm sure when we get to public comment, again, we'll, we'll have more on that.
Likewise.
And stormwater, we're still, we've been over this, we've had a good back and forth with our experts, some minor details need to be hammered out. But really, we're moving towards a secondary set of eyes approving the stormwater plan. That's where we're at on that one. And we talked about having Gartley and Dorsey oversee and doing inspections and a stormwater maintenance agreement that will be, yeah, shown on the actual subdivision plan that gets recorded so that the town can enforce the maintenance stuff, should that become a problem down the road.
And sectioning.
Yeah, I think, and I think they get that, the construction-
Construction plan.
Are you, are you looking for that to be on the actual subdivision plan?
I am.
It's really a different item, that's the problem. We could put it as like an attachment, you know, a subdivision is traditionally stamped by a surveyor.
Yeah.
And the engineer's gonna stamp the, the stormwater and the maintenance agreement. So we can put it on another plan and we can put it in any format you want, but-
I think some note on the, on the, on the subdivision plan that gets recorded that references a certain document that we will, that, that the board will approve.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that sounds good. Maybe we'll work, we'll send some suggestions over and you can let us know what you think or vice versa, and we'll come up with something.
I think important, and I mentioned it earlier, is-
I think important, and I mentioned it earlier, is, you know, the maintenance, doing recertifications, and I know Gartley and Dorsky know this about stormwater stuff. They often, there's a requirement on stormwater to get, do recertification with the DEP. It doesn't happen, and I'm not saying the applicant, when they need to do it, they're not gonna do it, but it's historically projects in the state of Maine don't get those things recertified. I don't want that to happen here in Camden, so on a project like this that has stormwater infrastructure, I know there's not a lot of stormwater infrastructure here, but I think it's important to include a requirement that they provide some sort of five-year certification to the town, that, yep, the HOA, whoever's retained someone to do a recertification. They looked at the stormwater, everything continues to be good. If it's not good, the engineer, likely Gartley and Dorsky, would come out and do that certification, because they're the ones doing this. They'd come out and make recommendations on how to address any issues that have come up over time, and that's, that's critical to make sure water quality is dealt with, and it's a priority and it's addressed, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Jeremy, I do, and applicant's okay with that criteria?
I would just say if you're going to require us to use Gartley and Dorsky, we'll agree to keep...
No, we will never require you to use anybody, you're free to choose.
I was gonna say, we...
Yeah, no, we can, we can come up with a pretty good routine, and a lot of times they can self-monitor these things and provide a checklist and photos, and it's only when something isn't working or isn't right, and the town will know, because you can require the association to provide you with that documentation. So we can provide the outline and the spec, we don't necessarily need to be involved all the time.
But I think Jeremy, Jeremy is looking for something that indicates that we actually will have a five-year, a five-year, not necessarily you, right? But somebody who's qualified will come out and do it.
I think the HOA needs to be inspecting and monitoring and maintaining all the time. And that annually, annually submit something maybe to the town, but every five years, I think you need to get a qualified somebody to come in and look at the site. Because, again, an HOA, I mean, we're dealing with this up at Loop and Terrace, we're dealing with other Pleasant, Pleasant Ridge, Andrew knows this. HOA, homeowners don't know anything about sub, about stormwater, really, how to maintain that infrastructure. So it's critically important to, I think, have a professional look at it from time to time.
Do you think annual is just...
No, I, I think annual, the HOA needs to maybe provide something to the town, but every five years or something, someone brings in a qualified stormwater inspector.
Right, so what would HOA provide annually?
They would provide like what Will's saying, a checklist, and, I mean, I've done it in Bangor, we had stormwater program where HOAs would submit annually the checklist. They'd take photos and say, everything looks good, and that, that suffices. It's that every-five-year one that we get from the engineers that say, oh, okay, everything does look good, and we know it's good.
Those drain pipes haven't failed under the road bed, and those kind of things.
Is that part of the maintenance agreement?
I'd like to see it as part of it.
Yeah, we've, we've actually included that type of language in our, our stormwater narrative, so we'll make sure it's clear, yeah.
I talked to Chris, Chris about it a little bit, but...
Yeah, we have one, and we have the, the maintenance agreement language from the ordinance, and we'll make sure all that's ready to go and clear, and we'll try to get something over sooner rather than later.
And by no means am I, you know, making an assumption that they're not gonna do it right, and it's not gonna be dealt with. It's just, over time, this is an ongoing problem.
And this is something that we're gonna be, taking your, your input on this, we're gonna be looking to do on all the projects we see, asking for that kind of review, because water quality is a primary issue here.
But especially this one where there is such a key...
Yeah, the brook and the habitat, everything, yeah. So you're not being singled out, but you are being the canary, the canary in the coal mine, so to speak.
Spaghetti lots.
Spaghetti lots.
Spaghetti lots, no spaghetti lots.
There aren't any spaghetti, spaghetti sounds good.
No spaghetti lots.
No spaghetti lots, no lake fossils. No impacts on adjoining municipality and no liquidation harvesting. We are trying here, uh, that's it.
Pretty much it. Do you wanna touch on the open space piece while you're here, or do you wanna continue that? I mean, I think it's important just to acknowledge what they're, what, how they're laying out the open space.
Almost there, yeah, that would be critical to kinda go through that.
I think we could get through it.
Yeah, I think we can.
Lot, and I think, yes, as Jeremy says, I think it's a key.
Which page are we on now?
Well...
Android B two?
I'm just putting it up on the screen for other...
Nine one, nine two, nine three, that?
Yeah.
I mean, really, we're down to the bottom of that first page of...
I mean, I did review this with, again, with Will and Andrew.
Yeah, so within the coastal residential district, the applicant indicates the parcel is served by an onsite wastewater disposal system, and is allowed one unit per 60,000 square feet, total parcel area is 1,887, so...
We kept it in square foot.
Yeah, that's right, thank you. Therefore, the total number of units allowed on the parcel is 31, to your question with Tia earlier. And so the, there are a total of 10 units proposed right now, and, you know, the board is certainly aware that this can be expanded, but it goes to, as John requested, like the same exact propos, you know, process.
On the next point, the applicant's response is no new lots are proposed, meaning you're not gonna, there may be new sta, subsequent stages of development with houses added, but no new subdividing of lots, is what you're clarifying there, right?
Yep.
Yeah, it was pretty much to address the, because that ordinance item says each lot...
Right, yeah, and I'm just trying to sort of...
Yeah, yeah.
Clarify that the same...
Says there are no new lots proposed in this application.
Right.
Okay, so we've got, basically, they're, they're preserving open space 33% of the parcel. What we learned from our site walk and from Keel's evaluation is that they're preserving a lot of the land closer to the park, right? And, and also along the brook. And, but what is generally designated is the deer-wintering areas, the, the more significant deer-wintering areas.
Yeah, and the, the nature of the development, the clumping.
The cluster development.
Clustering of preserves more open space than a traditional subdivision, which facilitates that as well, which is...
Anybody else have anything on this one? I do think that it meets the, both the letter and the spirit of the, of the requirement. And commend the, the applicant for that. The road coming through, we've seen that, they're gonna be cutting a new road.
Getting rid of the old one.
Getting rid of the old, and everything has been done up to snuff on that. And then we've got the setbacks.
That's pretty clear.
And all buildings are standalone, single-family units. And then we have the, the common ownership detailed in the, in detail, detailed in detail.
A fire pit and a sauna.
That's right.
So I think we're there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything on the open space, is there anybody on the board have any questions about any of this?
Nope.
We're gonna have an opportunity, of course, to go through this, but this is an opportunity to give the applicant any warning of any issues he may have going forward.
All right. Eight o'clock.
Yeah, I think this is the point.
Do you want to continue to...
And wanna continue this to a date certain, and I wanna give the applicant, make sure the applicant can chime in on this.
Yeah.
Because what we don't wanna have is, you know, schedule something, and then they're rushing to get things done, and it becomes an issue. And, I mean, I wanna give them plenty of time, but also cognizant of the developer's desire to get something done.
Proceed.
Can, can you clarify, so we're gonna continue the preliminary, and you're not gonna review the preliminary for completeness?
We did the completeness.
We've, we've done the completeness.
It's not gonna do the approval.
Right.
Until after the hearing?
Right, that's correct.
That's what we're proposing, yeah.
I mean, it says, by, by, by the ordinance, it says, right? It says, and I'm just gonna go back to it, the board shall hold a public hearing within 30 days of determining that it has received a complete application, right? So we've determined we've received a complete application.
Yeah, I think it's been a little bit disjointed and confusing, but I...
Ordinance itself is disjointed and confusing.
Right, but that's my understanding, is that we needed to get a completeness thing done. We had, we had a public hearing on the waiver, but we needed a completeness thing done, and now we, we need to, we've, we found it complete.
And you've also gone through the, there's a term for it.
We would still have to actually hold the public hearing and then the preliminary, preliminary review.
That you don't need more information, that you have enough information to go forward, so you've reviewed that, so essentially, you're at the end of phase except for a public hearing.
A public hearing.
The purpose of the preliminary...
It was only for the waiver, the comment we took was sort of outside of a public hearing, so it is confusing.
For preliminary determination that the proposed subdivision will meet the approval standards, and I think that's what you're doing. That's what you've done, determination. And, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't draft this ordinance.
Question Genie, though.
But it does say, it does say the board shall hold a public hearing within 30 days of determining that it has received a complete application. This is in the preliminary approval piece.
But let me ask this, we had a public hearing, we, we did have comments from the public on the waiver, and then you opened up to comments on the project overall.
Right, but I specifically stated that the comments were not part of the public hearing, that we were going to have them as an...
Why not? Why wouldn't they be part of the public hearing?
There has to be a separate public hearing on, on the, the public hearing we had was for the waiver alone, and then we weren't gonna get to the public hearing portion, see, we're about the table right now, and, and say we're gonna have a public hearing. We gave the gentleman a opportunity to speak instead of keeping him here and not getting to the public hearing, just so that you could hear their concerns, and we as the board would be alerted to them, they will have the opportunity to come back and repeat those at an actual public hearing, a public comment. I should, I should clarify those terms. Public hearing, it's all been public hearing. Public comment period is what I'm really trying to say. We did not have a public comment period on this part of the application. That's where we're at, and that's where we're tabling.
And I'm just gonna read from the ordinance, because, I mean, this is, it's, it's bonkers, and I am certainly gonna try to work with Shenley and whoever else in the board to try to fix this, because, you know, it, it talks about, and we're in this specifically, and this is in Article, Article, Article six, major subdivision preliminary plan review, right? Talks about your purpose, talks about the submission, preliminary plan review, right? And then it talks about a public hearing, and then it talks about preliminary plan determination. Then it says, within 30 days of the public hearing or within 60 days of determining application complete has been received, or within another time limit as may be otherwise mutually agreed, the board shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the preliminary plan application, so...
Spend a lot of time in preliminary.
You do, and, I mean, it talks about, and there's lots of public hearings here, so, I mean, it seems to me that within 30 days of the public hearing, or within 60 days determining application complete, you've gotta approve, approve with conditions, the preliminary plan. So rolling those 30, within 30 days of the public hearing, within 60 days of determining, determining, it seems like we could, in theory, schedule a public hearing and still be within the 30 days of the public hearing and 60 days of determining it complete, because we just determined it complete, right? So we can hold a public hearing at that public hearing, if you guys find, find that they approve with any conditions the preliminary plan application. I didn't, again, I didn't make this ordinance up, but it is...
The, the next steps, what we still could, we could do a public hearing on the preliminary plan tonight. And then, the preliminary plan, then we still have a public hearing on the final plan?
You can, yes, yep.
If the board decides to hold it on the final plan, that's what it says. You have a choice not to have a public hearing on the final plan. You don't have a choice to not have a public hearing on the preliminary plan.
The question is, do we do that tonight, or do we continue?
Well, I feel like we kinda cut that short, and people have left, and, and so I think that ship has sailed, unfortunately.
Well, yeah, it takes a, a month, right? The next, our next meeting, if, if we had the public hearing tonight, our next meeting in theory would be final submission.
Which could be another public hearing.
But, I mean, the, I mean, to be fair, the items that were discussed openly weren't related to the project during those comments. The people that were waiting for public comments, they were not related to our project, unrelated. It's critical information, but they were unrelated.
Yeah, but Allison McKeller left and didn't comment after the waiver, she left after the waiver.
And said that, did you say at that point that it wasn't gonna be a public hearing?
I don't know that she had, I don't know that she had further comment to make on that.
I did hear she had to leave, but...
You know, I mean, I'm just, I'm just pointing out one person, but, but I, I think...
It doesn't mean that you can't submit and go from the public hearing...
Straight to the final review.
To the same meeting?
The same meeting, see, Genie, Genie's your expert on this stuff, so...
Yeah, if, if that's the process, then I don't think we really have the issues.
I think it's a little weird, and I think Jeremy's right that the statute isn't great, but I think, I don't, I don't envision us trying to have two more, like, extended public hearings, like, you know what I'm saying? So this was really to make sure you guys had everything, get the final ready, and we found it complete. We've had some public comment that we, you know, some off, you know...
If we continue the...
I guess, yeah, some of it's on timing, right? Depends on when you continue public hearing to and get preliminary approval.
That's, I think, where we were of figuring out what the, that date would be, that if we can... If we continue the public hearing, may have their final...
So we advertised this as a preliminary, we advertised a hearing for today, or for the last time, for preliminary. So we don't need to do, meet all the requirements for notice, right, that are in the, in the ordinance. So we could, in theory, just continue this public hearing for, to two weeks.
Right, that's what I was starting to say, and then that would give the applicant the time to address all the various things that we've talked about, and come back, and have a public hearing, and potentially even do public hearing on preliminary and do a final determination.
We won't be prepared to do final in two weeks.
That's okay.
But in two weeks, we can, we can grant you preliminary plan approval in two weeks.
Perfect, that'll work.
What is the date?
Then we'll know, and it won't, we can just go right back and wait for a final.
When I say two weeks, that would be April 12th, we could do April 13th, which is the normal Thursday.
We're back to those dates.
Today's the 29th.
Two weeks would be...
Saying two weeks, I'm saying two weeks because Andrew may have to get some stuff together. I mean, if we wanted to do it on the 6th, we could try to roll that.
That's, but we're not gonna have time to prepare anything that we've commented on tonight, I think we'll try to wrap those into final. So you can schedule whichever you'd like to, we'll make it work.
But can we, is there a time when we think we would have everything ready for the final, and we could do both together?
We could, but it would be beneficial to just try to move through, I think, to make sure we have...
I think the best is to get preliminary approved and done, final.
Continue this to April 6th, which is next Thursday, preliminary plan approval.
Could we do the 5th?
I can do the 5th, I can't do the 6th, not that that matters, but...
Matters, we need a quorum. This is, this is better for me. Did we lose Mark?
No, Mark's still there, give us, I mean, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, we're flexible, we can, you know, we'll make, we'll cover whichever time needs to happen, and, yeah, I think we're there, we're ready to make...
So I'm going with, Genie, so your, your take is, even if we go to like the 13th, there's no delay for the applicant?
No, because it's gonna be May before they have their final anyway, so you can wait until the 20th.
Correct, we're, we're gonna try, well, we're gonna try to submit for final, we have to submit for final on the 18th of April, so...
Right.
The earlier the better, to make sure there's nothing that jumps out in there.
Right, that's why I'm thinking the 5th or 6th.
So that's just a public hearing to hear public comment, right? There's no other...
This is a public hearing, and then they, they will approve the preliminary plan.
Yeah, so there'll be, there'll be...
We would provide no other additional information.
There would be a public comment period you might wanna be involved in, obviously, right?
Questions, responses, any last...
And then we would go through the final determination on the preliminary, and that would give you that approval. They don't want August 6th.
No, they're ready for April 5th or 6th.
April 5th, April 5th for the hearing is, April 5th or 6th for the hearing is good for you guys.
5th works.
Does that work for you, Lucia?
I can do the 5th, I can't do the 6th.
I can do.
April 5th. April 5th?
We're making a motion to continue the hearing to April 5th.
That's a motion, is her second?
I'll second.
At 5:00 o'clock in the...
Yep, at 5:00 PM. We have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing on the preliminary application and approval until April 5 at 5:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Hi.
There you go. Yep, so, so moved, we will continue the public hearing on the pre-up, on the preliminary submission to April 5 at 5:00 p.m.
And some member of the public had better show up.
Or, or it will be really quick.
You got Chris here still, Chris will be here. He's going to bring sunshine with him. I do, too.
All right.
Thanks, everybody, yeah, and your patience, too, because this has been a little bit, you know, scattered today.
I mean, the, the process.
Yeah, I'm just kidding, I'm just trying to get some.
That's very impressive plan set for April.
I want mine in triple cap and laminated.
These are, actually, can you make them bigger?
We need a motion to, oh, we already continue, so no adjournment necessary.